With the pressures of the Cold War, the Old Atomic Energy Commission did not give much thought to race relations when choosing to put its new H-bomb facility in South Carolina. That oversight has haunted the Savannah River Site for the past sixty years, and still does today.
Racial discrimination has plagued the Savannah River Site since its inception. When it first opened to produce nuclear weapons to fuel the Cold War, African-American laborers were sent into the site's most dangerous areas. Sixty years later, African-Americans face professional dangers, such as immobility in the workplace. In 2009, even the Savannah River Site manager Jeffrey Allison was moved out of its position. Whatever way you slice it, racism is present.
At one point, for slightly within a time, I kind of thought that the world was heading towards a better place. And quickly arrived it wasn't.
Meek a Lindsay family, a father, a mother, and their ten children leading busy, ordinary lives in Greenwood, South Carolina in the 1950s. That was until Mr. Lindsay's new job turned their world upside down. It was the one decision to work at the bomb plant that changed their lives forever.
And he never had any knowledge going into that job that these risks to his health and his life and his family were there for him.
Mr. Lindsay was a principal at a black high school. When the Savannah River Site offered him a better paycheck, he took it. Besides the fact that the commute would be hours long, the lengthy drive turned out to be the least of the job's downsides.
He left primarily because he wouldn't pay more.
Right.
And with a family of ten children.
Ten.
Ten children and a wife who was a homemaker.
Right.
And his responsibility was to survive. And I'm certain that he did not realize the risks that were involved. I can't imagine.
Like Mr. Lindsay, the other African-Americans hired to be labor workers did not view the job as a death threat. They were not told the plant could expose them to dangerous levels of radiation.
The sacrificial lambs are people like Ula's father and her family. And these people have ripples out into the community.
All anyone knew was that the job was highly regarded and brought in good money.
I mean, it was a prestigious job supposedly at that time. But I think when you lose sight of that also as a human being, and this could be anyone who's doing the same thing, trying to sacrifice, trying to make a living for his or her family.
The signs of Mr. Lindsay's radiation exposure showed up early.
I think he started in fifty-two. In fifty-four, he was crying about, he was talking about the bronchitis and nose and odd respiratory problems that he was having.
The longer Mr. Lindsay spent working at the Savannah River Site, the sicker he became. His children watched as a job that was paying for their livelihood killed their father.
I remember him being sick. I remember his getting up in the middle of the night and throwing up blood in the bathroom. And I remember we had wallpapered, and it was always one little spot. I used to stare at it.
They discovered the rash on him. And that rash is definitely an indication of internal exposure to something that is foreign and harmful.
My father had been sick for many, many years, working sick.
He was locked in the situation.
After years of ignoring his symptoms, SRS management brought Mr. Lindsay home from work one day to die.
Our mother would drive to the hospital, and we would be left in the car because we couldn't go in. We were very young. And she would open his curtains so we could see him in his room.
And wave.
And wave, yeah.
Twelve years after making the decision to work at the bomb plant, Mr. Lindsay died.
He was the youngest of thirteen and probably one of the youngest to die in his family.
The African-American workers at the Savannah River Site were not given the same opportunities as the white workers to protect themselves from radiation. They were sometimes told to leave their badges that measured exposure levels at the door so they could work longer in dangerous areas. The white workers had separate laundry facilities to wash their exposed clothing, while the black workers did not.
All I knew is that my father got cancer as a result of working at the bomb plant. That's, you know. And his mom would often say, because she was very angry when she talked about it. She said, "They killed Ron. They killed Ron."
At this point in time, Mr. Lindsay is not the only member of the family that has been lost to cancer. Mrs. Lindsay and two of the children fell to the same fate.
My mother was a great homemaker. And I mean, we trumping up the five food groups. I mean, we were taught to eat so-called correctly way before it became something, you know, a common thing. I mean, I mean, from day one. I mean, so, and we were taught to exercise, take care of our bodies. I mean, so there's no reason. And we never smoked, never drank. I mean, that's just something that we don't, we never saw it in the house, and we never did it. And we were very close to our father, particularly the older one, spending a lot of time with him and being around him, washing his clothes, this kind of thing. Because, I mean, that's what you did. And there were ten children. My mother couldn't do it all. So all of us participated and had all responsibilities. There is no plausible reason to me why my sister Jo is not here today and had reservations.
But the healthy foods the Lindsay children were eating sometimes came from the leftover farms, from the towns that were relocated to construct the Savannah River Site.
They had food out there hunting. Those people used to go out there and hunt and get deer and stuff like that. They would hunt off these places where they buried and drank the stream from. They'd get food. My father would bring it home all the time. They would sell it on by the roadside. They would let the people go out there and hunt and get those things.
If you don't have a high regard for a certain kind of people, then you're apt to put them into situations that's not good for their life. And those who are not African-Americans perhaps will be wanting to know. So they don't want the jobs. So physically, none of them job is tough. But if you don't know, exposure is a long-term thing. I mean, all you know is what makes you money. I mean, you don't know.
Councilman Willer Hightower was the first African-American recruited from college to work at a programming lab at the Savannah River Site. He says he was lucky he was not a laborer working in the plant.
A lot of them got exposed. And some of them got exposed and exceeded the limit, and they kept them in the job.
Hightower was the only African-American worker in the programming lab, and he was kept away from those at the plant.
Anytime two or more African-Americans got together, they were concerned. I mean, they wouldn't know what you're doing, what's going on over there, I mean, what y'all doing, you know? That's, we always had that. I mean, that, much of that hasn't changed yet. And like I said, they just want to know what you're doing. Another reason I say that they want to know what you're doing is because they've done you so bad until they can't figure out that you're not blocking against them.
Hightower had been working at the site for years when he noticed he was no longer receiving promotions.
You know, at some point, you just hit a ceiling. And just nothing's happening. And you feel things shifting. For example, I had been rated very high, you know, as high as you could be rated in force of force. And then I wasn't rated as high, although my challenges, I felt, were just as significant as they were before.
Hightower says he eventually realized racial discrimination was to blame and that it was plaguing all departments of the Savannah River Site. Hightower and others filed for a class action suit in 1998.
Each person would have experiences that they would share with others. And so we were able to get sort of a hard spot of categories of concern.
Hightower ended up retiring in 2000 and receiving a $50,000 settlement. However, the lawsuit did not seem to stop the Savannah River Site from discriminating against African-American workers. Kristi Johnson fell victim to this when she, like Hightower, sought a promotion.
I see paper. What's on paper? What do they know? What, I mean, that's all I see. That's all I know. So when I came to the South, it wasn't about your education. It was, it's so hard to say, and it's sad to say, but I really found out what race and what my color meant when I came to the South.
As a California native, Johnson says she never experienced racial discrimination until she moved to work for the mixed oxide program at the Savannah River Site. She was the first in her family to finish college, and she says she was feeling confident in the workplace.
Well, now I had a little bit more oomph, you know, that I thought was going to take me far. But I quickly realized that the South and the West are two different places.
Johnson was working in contracts but had a degree in information technology and was looking for a job in that department. When positions opened up, she decided to apply. Six months and multiple emails later, she still hadn't heard back.
Here goes my resume. Here's my transcript. You know, you were asking for this, this, and this. And I have this. So, I mean, am I going to get an opportunity to be interviewed? He never would respond.
Johnson soon found out that the people being hired did not have her same credentials.
So after talking to a couple of guys, I start realizing that they didn't have an education. I'm like, whoa, wait a minute here. Something's going on. Point blank, because I was black.
Johnson went to the Human Resources Department as well as the higher-ups seeking help. But everyone turned their heads. She filed an Equal Employment Opportunity Commission complaint and faced consequences for that action.
Every week, there was some complaint, like, you know. It was simple as sometime, one day, one of the guys in my group came to me and said, "Hey, you don't have a one-ish margin on this letter." I think it was off by a, like a blip. And it just went off from there. I mean, every thing, every time I turned around, it was always something.
Johnson says they were trying to get her to leave, but she was determined to stay. Until one day, they made the decision for her.
The HR manager leans over, he said, "Kristi, we're going to have to let you go today. We're going to terminate you." And I was emotionally ready, but I was not ready. I mean, when he said it, it's like my heart dropped to my stomach.
Johnson says the discrimination did not end there.
In my opinion, I think they thought they were going to embarrass me by having the police standing outside of my cube and, you know, all these boxes standing over me. So when I walked into my boss's office, I grabbed my baby's picture. By the time he came by, I was ready to go. He said, "Oh, you're done?" I said, "Yeah, I'm ready." And, you know, he walked me out. And when we got in the elevator, my boss was like, "You know, Kristi, I'm really sorry this happened to you." He was visibly upset. He said, "But you knew it was going to happen." And he started messing with me.
The EEOC decided Johnson was not promoted because of her race.
I started thinking about all the people out there that were afraid to talk. And they can't do this. They can't keep doing this. You know, this is not right. It's not fair. I think they need to walk to justice, whatever justice may be. They, they're not going to get away with this. And that's when, you know, I filed the suit in federal court.
Johnson received an undisclosed settlement soon after this interview was conducted. But that doesn't mean she is no longer affected by her experience at the Savannah River Site.
I'm just, you know, down in here, I just know I'm hurt. And I don't know if I ever get to the point where I feel like I'm equal.
Many Savannah River Site workers and their families are still fighting for their rights.
Yes, our parents, you know, and we owe that to them. And but more than that, I mean, we, you know, we owe to society. We owe to the future. And we have to, you know, when something is wrong, we should address it.
The Lindsay family, Councilman Hightower, and Kristi Johnson. All of their stories are different, but one common thread is the same. Jim Crow has yet to be put to rest at the Savannah River Site. I'm Amy Litman, reporting from Washington for DC Bureau.
Call it Jim Crow. Hear that? Context of White Supremacy. Gusty Renegade in for another broadcast, hopefully to share constructive information on the system of white supremacy. Today's date, Thursday, May 5th, 2021. So I have been told this is our eighth study session on SE May Washington Williams. Dear Senator, we are almost done. I think we will finish next week. So one more session, and we will be pushing off to a new book, As of Yet, Undecided. The, man, we'd have been done with this book a long time. I went a little bit slower because I have taken so many notes on this book. She talks about so many events. I've tried to include other sources from Strom Thurmond's biography. And, you know, she talks about so many important events, lynchings and what have you. Last week, SE May Washington Williams mentioned the Savannah River Site Nuclear Facility. Now I'm just going to refresh your memory. This is all she said. "Her father, Strom Thurmond, had his law practice, which handled everything from murders to divorce, but made most of its money in eminent domain cases. Nearby was a federal nuclear reactor facility known as the Savannah River Plant. The Atomic Energy Commission had to purchase private land. My father's firm went to court to get the owners better prices than the government wanted to pay." Now she doesn't give any other information about the Savannah River Site. The segment that you just heard is about fifteen minutes, and that's just a little bit of the information about the Savannah River Site. It's even more interesting because I'd never heard of this place. That's one thing that I love about a good book. Like, sometimes you can learn so much information. It can send your mind in so many different areas. So Savannah River Sites, let's check this place out. In addition to what we heard in that audio segment, they had to get the land, as you heard. What were you talking about? All those different cases of black people come and boot out all those people? She mentioned that term eminent domain? Dorothy Dandridge, if people know her name, know who that is? Apparently, even Dorothy Dandridge was one of the black people who got the old boot, the old heave-ho, we got to put our nuclear facility in, make bombs. Incidentally, Dorothy Dandridge is kind of pale. Looks like she might have a white parent rape history as well. Anywho, I can only say it might be that SE May Washington Williams didn't know all of this information about the Savannah River Site and all of the racism. And incidentally, what you heard at the end, the black employees not getting promoted, getting fired unjustly, the ceiling they ran into, that's exactly what SE May Washington Williams described about her husband Julius last week. We're going to get one more brief snippet in about the Savannah River Site. They are included in the Independent Lens series. I believe it's year 2017. The segment is called Containment. And they're talking about the problem of having to identify all of the toxic sites, like the Savannah River Site, so that years from now, when people go to these locations, they say, you know, maybe aliens, ten thousand years from now, find this site, or people, you know, five hundred years from now stumble on this site and think they can fish, farm, whatever. Got to make sure that this is properly identified so that people don't kill and poison themselves ten thousand years from now at the Savannah River Site. Dear Senator, but before we get to that, a little more info about the Savannah River Site. And then, dear Senator, SE May Washington Williams, bravo to our narrator doing a spectacular job. Context of White Supremacy, audio segment one.
The Savannah River Site, the SRS, it's a large nuclear facility, three hundred and fourteen square miles. The distance between SRS and Burke County is the width of the Savannah River, which is somewhere between fifty to seventy-five feet. We're close, very close.
You can see there are no fishing signs and the do not enter signs. The problem is it never says why you shouldn't fish. It just says no fishing. So a lot of people think it's a territory thing, not a the fisher radioactive thing.
When my children and I drove cross-country with all our belongings in a U-Haul behind us in 1964, it was a far easier trip than it had been in 1953. Now, there were lots of chain motels, Howard Johnsons and Holiday Inns, where black people could get a night's sleep. The thrill of the trip for little Julius was getting to drive. Even though he was only fifteen and was a year away from his license in Georgia, he already knew how and promised me he had great skill behind the wheel. Given the endless distances, I decided to let him share the wheel with me. And the other kids lived vicariously through Julius's navigation. However, somewhere in a Texas rainstorm, we did skid off the road into a ditch. Some very nice motorists saw our plight and helped us get the car back on the road. And no harm was done, except maybe a little to my son's ego. We had a fine time. The children loved the desert. They loved the big mountains. They loved seeing the Pacific and eating tacos and being in the West. "The West is the best," they all agreed. Like Reverend King said, "We were free at last." We were totally exhilarated by the time we reached Julius's sister's house in Los Angeles, where we would stay until Julius came out and found us a place of our own. His sister, however, greeted us with the darkest expression. She didn't seem to want to hear about all our adventures. She was raining on our parade. When she asked me to step into a back room away from the kids, I understood why. She had just gotten a telephone call from Savannah a few hours before our arrival. Julius Williams had died of a heart attack. His law partner hadn't seen him for several days. They had to break into the house, which was locked. They found Julius's body in our bed, all alone. I had to walk outside to compose myself and take it all in before I could destroy all my children's joy and exuberance with this horrible news. If only I had stayed behind until Julius was ready. That was my first thought. Julius had suffered from asthma so many times, he'd wake up in the middle of the night in a coughing fit. I'd wake up with him, massage and slap his back until his breathing returned to normal. It always worked. I worried that he had been drinking, that he had woken up in one of those spells and was all alone and possibly too incoherent to call for help. Poor, poor Julius. I loved him so much. He was only forty-six. He was brilliant. And everything he had dreamed about was ahead of him, ahead of us. He was going to take the California bar. He was going to change the world. And now he was gone. What a tragedy. Julius's heart, the heart that had stopped, had already been broken by the assassination of John F. Kennedy, by the viciousness of Governors Ross Barnett and George Wallace, by the hatred he saw all around him, by the slaying of civil rights martyrs Goodman, Cheney, and Schwerner in Mississippi, maybe even by my failure to repudiate my father. And now my heart was broken by losing him. I went back in and told the children, who were even more shocked than I was, particularly coming exactly at the close of our joyous trip. What a roller coaster to go from total happiness to total misery in seconds. We just sat there crying for what seemed like hours. And then I had to unpack from the trip and pack to fly back to Savannah the very next day. Because Julius's sister was coming as well, I left the children with a family friend, Mrs. Pinkney, until I returned. I've never seen sadder faces than when I left them with her. They looked like orphans being exiled to a home. But it would have been too much to drag them onto a plane at this point. I promised them I'd be back soon to take care of them and kiss them all goodbye. I had never felt more protective of them in all my life. I knew I would have to do double duty as mother and father now. But through my grief, I never doubted that I could rise to the challenge. There was no choice. I was thirty-nine years old. Again, my life had taken a major turn. When I got home from Savannah and laying Julius to rest, I called my father to tell him my bad news. Even though the two men had never met and Julius regarded my father as the enemy of the black cause, I felt part of the tragedy of Julius's premature death was what the two men might have eventually accomplished together had they been brought together. I realized now how deeply I'd always hoped to make the match. But now, the time which I thought I had plenty of was gone.
I'm sorry about your husband, SE May. He was one of our first law graduates at state. It's a shame his life was cut short. He would have been a credit.
I couldn't bear hearing him say to his race, so I interrupted him. "A credit to America," I said. My father was actually very kind and sympathetic, talking about how he had felt when his first wife Jean had died so young. My mother had died young too, but he didn't mention that. He did, however, insist on sending me some help, which he did in the form of several money orders and envelopes with a Washington address I didn't recognize. There were no letters within. Again, he was being cautious. And I would have been an awful ingrate to second-guess his generosity. Back home, my children pulled together in the most inspiring way. Young Julius more than lived up to his name, becoming the man of the house, tall, strong, and confident, as well as someone who could fix anything. He became the guardian of his younger siblings, allowing them to flower. Ronald, our resident genius, seemed to study all the time, but always took out time to tutor his brother and sisters and made sure they did their homework and did it well. Wanda was our creative interior decorator and Monica our gifted chef. Meanwhile, I went to work teaching business classes at local trade and parochial schools while going back to college at California State University in East Los Angeles to complete my degree. I rarely got home before nine, but my family took care of each other so well, I didn't worry. And weekends together, from museum trips to flea market searches to Sunday services, were always happy events. It may sound like a too-good-to-be-true television family, but the hovering secret of Strom Thurmond, which none of my children knew, would have kept the show off the air. I rented a small house for a while, but soon I used some of my husband's life insurance to buy another piece of the California dream, a pretty ranch house with a driveway and a swimming pool, shaded by big palm trees. We even had a view of the ocean. It was our own resort located in an elite black neighborhood called View Park. View Park was like a black Beverly Hills. Along with adjacent Baldwin Park and Ladera Heights, View Park was about as good as a neighborhood could get for African-Americans of the time. It had nothing in common with Watts or South Central, which in their turn had little in common with Harlem, except poor people. Compton, which, where we had lived in the Joy Homes, was more lower-middle-class, a big step out of Watts, but by no means fancy. Our new neighborhood was as safe as Bel Air, and the homeowners couldn't have been prouder. After all, they had worked hard to own these homes. And they were going to make them showcases. My father, I reflected, could have used View Park as a case study in segregated self-sufficiency. It was interesting to me that the Los Angeles neighborhoods weren't more mixed as they had seemed when we had originally moved there. We had a few Asian neighbors, a few Mexicans, a few whites, but... We had a few Asian neighbors, a few Mexicans, a few whites, but this was largely the black bourgeoisie. Not that we turned our backs on our brothers and sisters in Watts. The black churches of Los Angeles, which were still located in the old South Central District, were filled every Sunday with worshippers from the good addresses and the collection plates that were passed were filled as well. The Watts riots of nineteen sixty-five made me rethink exactly what kind of racial paradise I was living in. It can't happen here, was what most of the people I knew thought. Perhaps we were too insulated, even during the height of the conflagration, which was triggered by the alleged racist brutality of the largely white Los Angeles Police Department. While black clouds of acrid smoke hung over the city, there was never any fear that our neighborhood was in danger. Los Angeles was simply too big, too spread out, unlike the crowded eastern ghetto. Violence could not help but dissipate over our endless spaces. Nonetheless, the damage was monumental. Dozens killed, thousands injured, millions of dollars of property, most of it belonging to white landlords and shopkeepers, destroyed. It was a warning that California was not immune to the rage at the inequality in our land of plenty. I knew I had to do my part to turn that anger into effort. I began to finish school. I registered to vote, which I had not done out of fear and intimidation in South Carolina and Georgia. It gave me such a sense of power, of participation, of pure citizenship. That voter registration reaffirmed my American-ness, which I felt I had lost or at least misplaced when I was in the South. At the same time, I became a Democrat, though I never told my father, not that he asked. I also joined the N double A C P. I was fulfilling my father's wishes and my own by going back to college. I went part-time, slowly but surely, and received my B A in Business Education in nineteen sixty-nine. That was one of the happiest days of my life. I only wish that I had a parent there to share it with. My father did send me a stunning diamond and emerald necklace and matching earrings. Having me receive my degree, he later said, was one of his happiest moments. Teacher that he was, he had always urged me to complete my education. I was thrilled that my children saw my graduation, and it set a good example for them. Under Ronald's tutelage and a bit of my own, each of them turned out to be a good student. In my part-time teaching, my initial subjects were typing and shorthand. But once I had my degree, the fact that I also had a nursing background enabled me to teach courses in the burgeoning medical business field. I was always able to get jobs, good jobs, all around Los Angeles. I taught English as a second language to students from all over Central and South America, as well as Asia. I was very flattered that so many of my students would want to come up to me after class and ask more questions. Their desire to learn was so gratifying that I was even later getting home to my own family. But my children understood and supported me totally. Eventually, I rose to become a guidance counselor, helping others plan their careers the way I would have liked to be have been able to plan my own. That was what gave me the most satisfaction. My father was right. That degree was a passport. During the period of the completion of my education and my emerging immersion in my teaching career, the only thing that seemed to be missing was a social life. But there was no time for it, nor did I miss it. My social life was my family, my professional life was my students, and I felt completely fulfilled. Strom Thurmond turned out to be right about a lot of things, though segregation wasn't one of them. However, by the next time I saw him in Washington in nineteen sixty-eight, he was sixty-six years old and was becoming one of America's elder statesmen. Despite Barry Goldwater's ignominious defeat by Lyndon Johnson in nineteen sixty-four, the only five states he carried beyond his own, Arizona, were southern states delivered to him by my father. South Carolina, Georgia, Alabama, Mississippi, and Louisiana. And home in South Carolina, Goldwater was the first Republican to carry the Palmetto State since the Reconstruction era. That's how much my father was an icon there, a prophet in his own country. Now in nineteen sixty-eight, Richard Nixon looked to my father to redeem himself from his heartbreaking photo finish loss to J F K in nineteen sixty. An election my father claimed the mafia had stolen for the Kennedys in Illinois at the last minute. Strom Thurmond had be had come through for Nixon, who went on to defeat the relatively liberal Democrat Hubert Humphrey. The Republicans had been deeply concerned about the seriously racist independent campaign of Governor George Wallace of Alabama. They therefore looked to my father to save the South for them. I think one of the reasons my father backed off from his notorious hard-line position against true racial equality was that when he looked in the mirror, he may have seen George Wallace. That cruel reflection of the atavistic nigger hater may have sobered him up, as did the assassinations of Martin Luther King and Robert Kennedy, as well as the student revolts at Columbia and other fine schools, including my college, whose name had now been formally changed to South Carolina State. In February of that year, the students who had been cowed into political apathy when I was there finally had caught the protest fever of the time. Their goal was simple. They wanted to be able to use an all-white bowling alley, All-Star lanes. But South Carolina was not used to protests, and the massing of black students stirred up the white paranoia. To quell this display of black power, the governor of South Carolina, a Democrat, called out the Armed Forces of S L E D, or State Law Enforcement Division. An army of riot police with guns, nightsticks, tear gas, and stormtrooper-style leather jackets and boots descended on Orangeburg. At the end of the showdown, three students had been killed and nearly thirty more badly wounded. Because it was a small black school, the tragedy barely made the press. But I know my father was aware of it, and just like the Willie Earl lynching when he first became governor and before his ambitions sent him careening to the right, he was deeply ashamed. As Bob Dylan sang, "The times they are a-changing." My father was getting old, but not too old to realize he had better change as well. He loved being in office, in power too much. In the November election, Strom Thurmond carried South Carolina for Nixon, along with the more moderate rest of the South, save for Texas, Arkansas, and the four other deep southern Goldwater states, the Axe Handle States, as Californians called them. Referring to a favorite weapon of violent racists. Leaving the Axe Handles to George Wallace and the equally inflammatory Georgia Governor Lester Maddox, my father now became the hero of the party of Abraham Lincoln. Heroes are entitled to their idiosyncrasies. My father's was an obsession with beautiful, very young women. When I saw him, his secret courtship with a twenty-one-year-old former Miss South Carolina named Nancy Moore was breaking in the press. Like the late Jean Crouch, Nancy was a pert and perky college girl, a true Southern belle who had the crown to prove it. The sleek Nancy, a Duke graduate who also attended the University of South Carolina Law School, grew up in Aiken, where her father was a scientist at the Savannah River Nuclear Plant. She was definitely well-groomed, a gifted pianist who came close to winning Miss America and who had become an effective spoke spokeswoman for the state. I remember first seeing her pictures in the Los Angeles papers, even before my father publicly courted her. With gym neighbors who played Gomer Pyle on the hit show, the Andy Griffith Show and Gomer Pyle, U S M C, and who later was revealed to be the secret love of my own heartthrob, Rock Hudson. Beware of heartthrobs. Like Jean Crouch, Nancy Moore had been hired as my father's administrative assistant, and from there, love conquered all. Though my father drew the line at standing on his head for her, at least not in the presence of photographers, he had learned a lot of lessons, except the humility of his maturity. How in the world could he have the audacity to marry someone a third his age? This wasn't a generation gap. This was the Grand Canyon. But he got away with it, and instead of becoming the laughingstock of politics, he became a role model, and not just for aspiring dirty old men only in Hollywood and Washington. Could a man get away with this and enhance his popularity? Nancy had loved his employ to plan their Christmas wedding by the time I got to Capitol Hill in nineteen sixty-eight. Congratulations, Senator, I said when I shook his hand. We always shook hands when we first saw each other, and it always hurt. I somehow hoped that he would invite me home to the wedding, but that was unrealistic. I never asked him, but I assumed he never told either of his wives about me or my mother. Imagine what these Southern belle child brides would have done. I myself had told no one but Julius, not even my children. It's not that Strom Thurmond ever swore me to secrecy. He never swore me to anything. He trusted me and I respected him, and we loved each other in our deeply repressed ways, and that was our social contract. I would have loved to talk to someone, but I couldn't.
See what diet and exercise get you?
He showed me a silver-framed picture of his beauty queen in her tiara. He was as cocky as a schoolboy who had just gotten lucky with the homecoming princess. Doesn't she want children? I asked him, perhaps impertinently, as he seemed taken aback.
Who says she doesn't, my father replied. I think she'll make a fine mother.
Again, there was the cockiness of a young stud, totally confident of his breeding abilities, even if no one else in America was. He wasn't going to marry a baby. He was now going to have babies of his own. The sheer audacity, I guess, was what got him into this office. I couldn't help feeling a twinge of jealousy. I somehow fancied being his only child. Even though I was a state secret, I knew as a parent how much you loved your children. Now I saw myself having to share that love with a new generation, one that he could have photo opportunities with. Aside from a trophy wife and a trophy president, my father was equally proud of his role on the all-powerful Senate Judiciary Committee in derailing the nomination of the great jurist Abe Fortas as our next Chief Justice to replace Earl Warren. Throughout the South for years, I had seen bumper stickers that read, "Impeach Earl Warren, the integrationist villain behind Brown versus Board of Education." Now, he was stepping down, and his position was the legal football in the big game between liberals and conservatives. Thurmond wanted President-elect Nixon, not the scallywag lame-duck President Johnson, to appoint the next Chief Justice and steer the court toward conservative waters. To do so, he had to block the nomination of Fortas, a Memphis-born child of poor Jewish immigrants who was already on the court and considered its most brilliant mind.
I got him, my father boasted, as if he had just shot a raccoon at the Orangeburg Hunt.
I crossed my mind that my father might have been anti-Semitic, but I crossed it off. Yes, he hated Soul Blatt, but not as much as he loved Barry Goldwater. He had grown up among too many Jewish merchants in Edgefield to feel xenophobic toward them. And he had seen them prosper far too much to regard them as inferior, as he may have with blacks, until they had a fair chance. My father's problem with Fortas was that he was Johnson's man. He needed ammunition to beat him, and he found it in Fortas's softness on pornography. The candidate was bigger on First Amendment freedom than my supposedly straight-laced father, although my father's growing reputation as an aging Casanova put the lie to his personal puritanism. More damning to Fortas was a special seminar my father's investigators had found he had given at American University for captains of industry whose corporations might have ca might have cases coming before the court in the future. This was a conflict of interest. It didn't seem that grave to me, but my father was grasping at straws, which in this case he turned into kindling. In the end, Fortas withdrew his nomination, and Nixon eventually appointed the conservative Warren Berger to be the chief.
The Chief Justice has to be above reproach, my father said.
But was my father above reproach with his secret black daughter? Wasn't this as relevant as Fortas's students? I never asked. I felt by now the statute of limitations had run out on our secret. As to whether it was right or wrong, a secret was a secret, and so it would remain. Why did I continue to keep it? By this point, sheer loyalty to my father was the answer. I didn't want to do anything that would damage his political career. I was in awe of my father for a lot of reasons. His power, his lineage, his perseverance, his affection for me after his own fashion. I felt honored to be his daughter. I liked the idea of changing him, and I believe I did, but I certainly had no interest in hurting him or dishonoring him in any way. This was my first visit to my father, after which he did not give me one of his thick envelopes. I thought that maybe he was getting forgetful in his seniority. But several weeks later, I was contacted by a lawyer named Thurmond Bishop, who was my father's nephew by his sister Martha. Thurmond informed me that he was taking care of his uncle's finances. He asked me to fly to Atlanta so he could give me money that his uncle had placed in his care for my care. So, not very long after I had just returned from the East Coast, I turned around and flew right back out again. If my father wanted to help, wasn't that what fathers do? After all, these were his grandchildren. If he didn't see them, didn't claim them, which is the southern expression in regard to a backstreet family, then why shouldn't he assuage his guilt or duty or honor or whatever by helping out? Hartsfield Airport in Atlanta was not the pleasantest of places to meet my white cousin. Not that Thurmond Bishop ever embraced me as kin. Our meeting was strictly business. We established a rendezvous spot in front of a gift shop near the Delta Airlines ticket counter. Thurmond was nervous but extremely polite. He was tall and thin and in his mid-twenties, and resembled his uncle in a rangy, gangly way. His courses in law school had surely not prepared him for this assignment. He handed me a very large cashier's check and a file on telephone numbers and addresses where he could be reached. We didn't even sit down for coffee, thus perpetuating the Thurmond tradition I had with my father of never sharing a meal, even a Coke in public. This was Atlanta after all, and blacks and whites were rarely seen breaking bread together. Thurmond Bishop told me he would be my contact should I need any assistance and that he would be in regular contact with me over future disbursements. and that he would be in regular contact with me over future disbursements. He said he had just finished law school and was taking care of all the Thurmond business. He was the third generation of Thurmond lawyers and knew he had a powerful tradition to live up to. They liked to keep all their legal matters in the family, he said. He didn't tell me why we were going through these much more formal channels after so many years of my dealing directly with my father. I assumed it was because my father was starting a new life with Nancy Moore and did not want any details of our relationship to leak into the idol that would be their marriage. Or maybe he was afraid that the FBI had put him under surveillance. This was a time of great paranoia in the government, and any great man couldn't help but be too careful to keep damaging secrets from his real or potential enemies. I wasn't insulted by my father's secrecy, but rather grateful for his generosity. As I grew more mature, that was increasingly becoming my style, to try to look on the bright side. Thurmond Bishop and I had a cordial but somewhat awkward conversation about his new law career and my new teaching career. He kept staring at me as if in a trance. So this is my first cousin, he seemed to be asking himself. What on God's earth was my uncle up to? The young lawyer thanked me for taking this long trip. I thanked him for taking care of business, and I asked him to thank his uncle for his ongoing kindness. I don't recall either of us using the word father. The concept was too hard for him to handle and for me to articulate. We shook hands. Thurmond's grip was normal, not the vice of his uncle. He went back to his gate to catch his return flight to Columbia. I went back to my gate to catch my return flight to Los Angeles. I was on the ground less than two hours. The fact that Thurmond Bishop was handling his financial affairs did not, as I feared, distance my father from me. It actually made us closer. Now, my father would call me every month or so just to say hello. One day, he astonished me by calling to say that he was coming to Los Angeles for a speaking engagement and wanted to meet my children. He never called them his grandchildren, only your children. But he had rarely called me his daughter either. In this case, though, his action was speaking far louder than any words. I was extremely excited. His desire to connect was a major breakthrough. My problem now was what to tell the children. I thought about not telling them at all, only that I was taking them to hear Strom Thurmond speak. However, I realized they would have never gone. Julius was now nearing twenty. He had Black Panther posters on his wall, sported an Afro, and read books like Soul on Ice. James Brown's Black is Beautiful, Say It Loud, I'm Black and I'm Proud, was constantly blaring from the stereo in his bedroom. His younger brother Ronald remained the studious one, wanting to become a doctor, but he idolized Martin Luther King and would have had a natural distrust of any Republican, much less the King of the South that was his grandfather. My daughters were barely teenagers, but they too had a black awareness and a black pride. They all had Afros, even I had an Afro. I got it at the Lady Koffir on Santa Rosa Lita Street. For me, it was a matter of style, but for my children, one of pride. Go hear Strom Thurmond? Come on, Mom. Who's next? George Wallace? Why not George Lincoln Rockwell? Strom Thurmond had recently made news by hiring his first black aide, Tom Moss, a former Meatpacking Plant Union organizer and NAACP voting drive leader. I was delighted that my father had made what was, for him, a radical change. Of course, the Yankee-dominated press lampooned the appointment as sheer tokenism. A third of South Carolina's voters were black, and Strom Thurmond, a crafty politician, was only doing what came naturally to a white supremacist. I was sure that my children, who were very interested in current events and loved watching the news, would concur in this popular view. The bottom line was that I was going to have to sit down with them and bring them into our family's secret. I wasn't looking forward to it. I assembled the children in the living room one night after dinner. Did you ever think of why you're all so light? I asked them. Daddy's mama was an Indian, wasn't she? Monica volunteered. But what about me? I continued. Your mama was an Indian too? Wanda added, laughing. Mom, can I go watch TV? Julius asked. Laughin's about to come on. Laughin can wait a minute, Julius. He fidgeted in his chair bored to death. What if I told you I had a white father? I tried to wake him up. No big deal, he said yawning. But we know your father, so what's the point, Mom? They had met Mary's husband many times and assumed he was their grandfather. But what if I told you grandpa wasn't your real grandpa? I paused and got no response. Because he isn't. They still seemed bored. A lot of people from the South had white fathers, Ronald said. You mean Grandma fooled around? Your grandma wasn't your real grandma either. Then they woke up. Who was your daddy then? He still is. Then where is he? Do you know him? Ronald wondered. I do. And your mama? She passed years ago, before you were born. Can we meet this guy? Monica asked. You can, I want you to. How come you waited this long to tell us? Wanda asked. I wasn't sure you were ready. Julius was still lethargic. I'm ready for Laughin, Mama. Can I be excused? Where does he live? Monica was far more interested than Julius was. In Washington DC. He's a senator. Julius came to attention. What's his name? Teddy Kennedy? Julius liked to joke. You wish, I thought. I took a deep breath and let it out. Strom Thurmond. Remember Julius, when we went to see that senator in Washington when you were little? That man wasn't just your senator, he was your grandfather. Gross, Wanda exclaimed. Come on, that's not funny, Ronald gasped. I went through the entire story to my wide-eyed family. They were at rapt attention. Not one of them believed that Strom Thurmond loved my mother. You're fooling yourself, Mom, Monica said. I'm sure he took advantage of her. Don't talk ugly, Monica. That's what rich white men do to their servants, Ronald reinforced her. She was scared to death of him, she had no choice. She loved him. She loved the man, I insisted. Do you love him? Wanda put it to me. How could you? We wouldn't be living here right now if it weren't for him. I tried to reason with them. It was just as hard as when I tried to reason with my husband. He's been good to us. Let the man be a lot better, Julius said, his voice crisp with rage. He is getting better, and he'll be better still if he sees who his kin are and how special you all can be. I had to play all my mother cards, my guilt cards, to calm them down. In the end, good kids that they were, they agreed to come. Strom Thurmond addressed a full house at a large Christian church on Wilshire Boulevard. It was an entirely white crowd, and they cheered his conservative message of less government, lower taxes, and stronger military defense. There wasn't a word about segregation, a word that would have offended black people if there had been any besides us present. My family and I, with our Afros, were the only black people there. The whites must have thought we were the Jackson Five. Afterwards, in the congregation hall, we stood in a long line with countless well-wishers. My father was a little stunned when he saw us and are here. Yet he kept his cool as always. He shook everyone's hand, mine included. It wasn't some emotional family reunion, there were too many people around for that, and besides, he preferred things this way, just as if he were out on the stump charming for votes. Once the line had finished its respects, he came back to us. We spent a half an hour together. He introduced us to his local handlers as some dear old family friends from Edgefield. He asked each of the children about their schooling and couldn't resist his standard plugs for diet and exercise. He mentioned how good the strawberries and cantaloupe were out here and warned them to watch out for the lard in the Mexican food. He thinks we're fat, Monica whispered to me. No, he doesn't, I reassured her. He does that to everybody. He didn't tell Julius he had played with him as a boy. He probably didn't remember. Eventually, his aides hustled my father to his next appointment. I wished he had been able to visit our house to spend some real time with us to see how the Black Thurmands actually lived, another day I hoped. Y'all come see me in Washington, he said in a farewell, insisting that if any of us needed anything, to call him and he'd fix it up. He probably said that to everyone, but the thought was appealing. Can we really go see him? Wanda asked me wide-eyed. I have, I said, so can you. He didn't seem so bad, Ronald admitted. I thought he'd be an old redneck. Are you sure we're blood? Julius puzzled. I don't see it. I do, a little, Monica said. A new debate began. The consensus, though, was that my children would accept their grandfather for whatever he was, mainly because what he was now wasn't what he used to be. They assured me they would preserve the secret. Julius the jokester kept playing with the payoff concept. That guy must own half of South Carolina, and he bought it when it was cheap a hundred years ago. He's not that old, Wanda defended him. Leave him alone. I could see she felt something for her grandfather. Strom Thurmond turned out to be as good as his word. Wanda went to visit him in Washington and received the red carpet. When Ronald decided to go to medical school, his grandfather arranged for him to get a commission in the Navy that paid for his entire education. He did lots of smaller favors for our family, and he continued, through his nephew Thurmond Bishop, to send us money. Perhaps not as much as Julius would have liked, but to me, an extremely generous amount as a token of his affection for us. I flew back east every year to pay my annual visit to Coatesville and to my father in Washington. It was fortunate that I enjoyed airplanes. Just as he was helping us, my father, who was legendary in South Carolina for his constituent services, began lavaging, lavishing his Mr. Fix-It political magic on his black constituency. In addition to creating jobs and righting ancient wrongs, from the schools to the polls, the senator continued to recommend black people to key state offices as well as to his own personal staff. One of his beneficiaries was my old boyfriend, Matthew Perry, who had gone on to become one of the top black lawyers in the South, as well as the chief counsel of the state and NAACP. By doing so, my father was the first Southern senator to ever recommend a black for any federal judgeship. He might have done the same for my Julius if he had lived. He's a fine man, that boyfriend of yours. He may make it to the Supreme Court, my father told me on a visit to his office. How do you know I went out with Matthew? I asked him. That's my job, is he? My father said with that Cheshire Cat smile. Knowledge is power. If you liked him, then I knew he was all right. That was a long time ago, I said. A good judgment doesn't have an expiration date, he answered. I noticed that my father was looking weird, but it took me a while to figure out what it was. Then I got it. His hair. There was not only more of it, a lot more, but it was also the strangest color, a kind of orange instead of its normal brownish gray when I last saw him. It was so ugly, I thought of ancient orange, the toxic defoliant they used in Vietnam. I later learned that once again, my father was way ahead of the health and beauty curve. Inspired by Senator William Proxmire of Arkansas, he had gotten hair implants. He wanted to have a youthful mane to match his still youthful physique. I never visited him without his reminding me of his Olympian workout regimen and that Spartan diet of his. Don't you crave fried chicken? I had to ask him. I crave feeling young, more than I crave feeling full. He was obviously feeling virile. He had fathered a daughter, Nancy, and a son, Strom Junior, and would sire still another son and daughter. I would have liked to meet them. Instead, he showed me their baby pictures. I never asked him if he told his wife about me. I was sure he hadn't.
There we go. Adjusted my microphone. Worthy of great pity. Brother Neely Fuller Jr., that's what he says. Worthy of great pity. Gus T. Renegade, S.M.A. Washington Williams, Anthony Broadwater. Pick a black person. Julius Williams, pick a black person, victim of racism. Worthy of great pity. All of the non-white people in Vietnam poisoned from Agent Orange. Worthy of great pity. Context of White Supremacy Book Club. Audio segment one done, we will resume. Still in, I think it's chapter eight, still in chapter eight, I believe. We'll have one more session left, and then we will be all done with the book. The number is seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred. Code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. Number again, seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred. Code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. Spectacular job to our narrator. Quickly, let me read one, because a lot of people wrote in, so I get in one email, then we'll hit the phone line. First email. Caller wrote in, wow. Oh, this is our narrator. Absolutely amazing job. Our narrator writes, the story of the she has commentary about the book as well as the audio segment that we started with, the Savannah River site, which was mentioned again this week with no mention of all the information that we talked about at the beginning. Talk about Agent Orange and environmental racism. Savannah River site, same thing. So, our narrator, South Florida, writes in, wow. The story of the father, Mr. Lindsey, who left his principal position for the plant job in an attempt to better support his wife and ten children was upsetting. And how? Trying to do his best, he was instead deceived and harmed by white people until his demise. With Ms. Johnson, Johnson, sorry, I found her story compelling for several reasons, like S.M.A. Washington Williams. She suggests that in the West, she hadn't experienced race. Racism, question mark. When she discovered less qualified people were hired for positions she was qualified for, and then was harassed for following a process of complaint. Thought about workplace racism. Me too. One other person wrote in, reading B, one word for this book, delusional. I am a week behind but catching up, and I find the book very interesting in so many ways. Me too. Probably not a book I would have read on my own, but glad I am reading it now. That's the purpose of the book club. I do understand that S.M.A. is a victim. Bold face print. But I cannot understand if she is naive or just delusional, which makes some of her comments difficult to listen to. You haven't even heard this week yet. Each time I hear her call Strom her father, it's an irritant considering who Strom Thurmond was. The reader, narrator, is doing an awesome job, by the way. Hear, hear. Hear, hear. Number again, seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred. Code five six four The code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you have commentary to share. I did get my gripe in, I will acknowledge, I grousted, I don't know if it's grouching, but I, I pointed out that she did not say anything about JFK's assassination previously and she did mention it this week, although we still didn't hear anything about the lynching castration of Emmett Till. Folks who dialed in with a hand up, if you have commentary to share, line should be open. Proceed.
May I be heard?
Yes, sir. Our caller two two six two, yes, sir.
Thank you, Gus, for taking my call and greetings to everybody who was, um, participating and those who are listening to it later. Um, yeah, I mean, this is just a sad event for, uh, this attempted black family. Um, and I guess I got my answer, my question answered about, uh, the late Julius Williams. Um, yes, it doesn't make it to the end of the book, huh? Uh, it is just a very sad book. Um, I do want to point out this quote from Strom Thurmond. Um, he said, I crave feeling young and more than I crave feeling full. Uh, that's a pretty good mantra to have, uh, when it comes to people who are attempting to improve on their diet and, uh, uh, feel younger and more, uh, uh, energized. Um, S.M.A. is a victim. Um, I don't mean to criticize it, but, uh, the fact that she waited to tell her children about Strom Thurmond after her husband has passed away, I don't know how I want to take that. I mean, I'm an attempted marriage and I, if something this big was a part of my situation, I would want the children to know while I'm there to explain to them my stance on it, not for them to be, I don't know, set up in a way where they'll have to accept this racist as a part of their family. And, um, to not have any, well, I, I guess the son kind of had some pushback, but to not have, uh, the other parent give his critique of the whole situation from his perspective, I don't know, I, I, I don't think that was good for her as an attempted wife to do that, to wait till this one to do that, but I guess stabbing is that, um, uh, that'd be it for me for right now. Thank you, Gus. That.
Very interesting point. We had a different, uh, listener write, wrote in, haven't read his commentary yet, but he wrote in last week and he said that S.M.A. does not seem very sympathetic towards her husband Julius. And I said, hmm, that's interesting. What do you, what do you mean? Now, this was before we found out Julius dies, you know, at forty-six. Um, and so he said, give me a little bit, he, we have another session, so he says, let me think on that and I'll share. Then especially because they had so many arguments over, you know, uh, her father, how Julius felt about her father. He said they couldn't even talk about this, they couldn't even talk about politics because of the questions that he's just being logical about all this, asked some of the same questions that her children did initially. Uh, and then the money thing, she's lying about that, not even, ah, man. Hmm, hmm, hmm. That is a really important point to think about, cause I am sure he would have had quite a bit to say, even the fact, why are the children just finding out about this now? These are your grandparents, like all, I mean, just generations of lies. She goes until thirteen thinking that Mary and her partner, or excuse me, Mary and John Henry Washington are her parents, so we're gonna duplicate that lie with her children? Jesus Christ, for what purpose? How is that constructive? Oh, no, we gotta wait until they're twenty. Let me tell you this, as someone who has no children. Children are always ready for the truth. We come up with every kind of justification to lie to children. Oh, we got Santa Claus. Oh, we got the Easter Bunny. Oh, Mary is your mother. And then to tell that one two times, two different generations get the same lie. Why is that? Why do we have to behold, all of this to protect the white? Pamela Evans Harris, the late Renee Piatek, keeping white people's secrets, and we gotta do it for two generations? Uh, much obliged, sir. Other folks who dialed in with a hand up?
Greetings, everyone.
Retired firefighter in Florida with our narrator.
Where's James Brown when you need him? I was just thinking that, uh, as, uh, the, uh, first reading was taking place, uh, with that particular, uh, song and the, uh, the afros that she was mentioning, uh, I can certainly recall that era, uh, chiefly symbolic, uh, and, uh, you know, the afros kept getting bigger and bigger and bigger. Uh, I guess that was for symbolic reasons also. Uh, uh, the problem is still here. Uh, it, it, I mean, I, I, I see a, uh, effort, uh, with that, uh, with the hair and whatnot still today, but the problem is still here. Uh, yes, the whole idea of, of quote unquote, keeping secrets, you know, and, uh, I'm sure it's more than one person, uh, uh, knew about, uh, the, uh, the advent of her being, uh, the daughter of, uh, this, uh, this person that many consider to be a racist white supremacist. Uh, also, uh, basically, it, it just shows you on how expert white people are and how overwhelming, uh, mentally, uh, the system of racism, white supremacy and white individuals, uh, are on us mentally. And we are witnessing a seduction, a seductive expert, a seductive expert, literally. I mean, there's not a pimp on this planet that couldn't, couldn't best the senator in itself, uh, into, uh, attracting females, including his daughter. The only thing that, uh, he would not go to, uh, the, the level of having sex with his daughter, but he is definitely has been seducing her all of her life and it has been very effective. It's been very effective, uh, and, uh, it's like, it's gotta, I mean, it's, it's, it's actually, it's not really mentally healthy at all because, uh, for all of her known life, she's been separated, divided, divided between, between, uh, understanding that, uh, the relationship, well, the person that is her father is a racist and at the same time, she admires and loves him, love him so. That, that is, that is one hell of an arrangement to, to, uh, to be in and, and as others are saying, she certainly is a victim of racism, white supremacy. Uh, probably more, probably more in a more close matter than a lot of non-white people are, being that she can, you know, uh, witness directly within her bloodline, uh, one of these people. And, uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Confusion is lethal. Much obliged, caller in Florida, black and I'm proud for reals, like, man, you could've inserted that one in numerous times for the audio segments this week. Uh, let me nab some of the other folks who wrote in and then I'll get to my commentary as well. So, other people wrote in, uh, chapter eight, uh, one of our investors, he says, mm, mm, mm. Number five, Julius Williams died of a heart attack, forty-six years old, heart already had been broken by John F. Kennedy, Governors Ross Barnett, George Wallace, Goodman Chaney and Schwerner. Maybe his inability to use his legal education to the fullest, self-medication with alcohol and being beaten in front of his friends may have played a bigger role in his untimely demise. Hmm. Black male privilege? Number six, my father's obsession with beautiful, very young women, children, pictures in Los Angeles newspaper, Jim Neighbors, Rock Hudson, beware of heart throbs. Both were gay, white men. Now, see, do they call that on the down low? When they play the syndicated, old, old, old versions of Gomer Pyle and all that? Oh, he was on the down low. Was that blackmail privilege too? Hmm. Number seven, a twinge of jealousy, having to share that love with a new generation lawyer, Thurman Bishop. He would fly to Atlanta, trained SEAL, Backstreet Family, FBI surveillance, any great man couldn't help but be too careful. This book reads like an argument taking place in her head. Oh, that's what retired firefighter just said about she's kind of divided against herself. Is it love? Is it abuse? Is my father a great man or is he a racist? She is continually demonstrating the essence of cognitive dissonance, mental stress by mental stress caused by holding conflicting beliefs. Number eight, not one of them believed that Strom Thurmond loved my mother. That's what rich white men do to their servants. She was scared to death of him. She had no choice. He didn't seem bad. I thought he'd be an old redneck. Another great example of how skilled white supremacists are in causing confusion in their non-white victims. The children went from clarity and truth regarding Grandpappy Strom to, eh, he's not so bad. We are confused easily. Number nine, uh, nineteen seventy-eight, Charlie, oop, 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 didn't get that far, pause. We'll pick back up there once we get to the rest of it, make sure we didn't miss out on anything. Uh, yeah, got the rest of it. Uh, so, all right, now I can go to my notes and, oh, yeah, I'll pick it up as we go in, uh, in order. She starts out, she says, Julius's sister greeted us with the darkest expression, especially the number of times that fair and bright are used in the book. Do we have to associate darkness, black with everything vile, evil in the universe? Um, let's see, he dies of a heart attack, man, everything that he said, uh, and the arguments about Strom Thurmond. I can't get a job. I am a law school graduate and I can't even get a job. When I do get a job, I don't get promotions and raises, I want you to remember that. I don't get promotions or raises and can't even get a job and I have a law degree. I'm just like these other shipless black males that she's mentioned over and over and over and over and over in the book, all over the country. And my racist white father-in-law, who I have never met, is bankrolling our family at times. I'm sure that didn't, you know, make things any easier. And then the alcoholism, and then you get beaten up in front of your friends and blah, 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 blah. Blackmail privilege. Uh, let's see. And he suffered from asthma comorbidity with COVID nineteen. I wonder why he had asthma? Now, they talked about the Savannah River plant and Agent Orange, black people having all this asthma. Hmm. This would be the time where you would have lead paint and it would be, what's the problem with that? Lead paint? Eh. Hmm. Julius has asthma so many times, he'd wake up in the middle of the night in a coughing fit. I'd wake him up with massage and slap his back until his breathing returned to normal. Hmm. I wonder if they had to live someplace contaminated that contributed to all of that. You are what your grandparents ate. She talked about that in the book. Any, and particularly at key points in the pregnancy and what have you, in development. If you're exposed to certain chemicals, toxins in the air and all the rest of it, greater likelihood for asthma, respiratory problems. Uh, da, 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 da. Let's see. Oh, man, this passage right here, Julius's heart had stopped, had already been broken by the assassination of John F. Kennedy. I was so offended by this whole passage, I literally had to get up and walk outside. Like I said last week, the assassination is not mentioned. That's not discussed, this was a world, I said, this is probably easily one of the most, ten most important events in the last hundred years on the planet, easily. That's not just a paragraph separate. Her husband dies and it's, oh, his heart was broken by the death of this white president. Are you joking? All the trauma that he experienced, that didn't break his heart? His racist white father-in-law, that didn't break his heart? Seeing him talking about the Negroes, that didn't break his heart? Not being able to get a job and all the rest of it, the glass ceiling, that didn't break his heart? The assassination of John Kennedy, who loved the Negroes. As I said before, he and his brother, Robert Kennedy, when he was at the Justice Department, they approved the coin tell pro J. Edgar Hoover wiretaps on the beloved Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. Nixon's piano, Dr. Kenneth O'Reilly, guest on the program, talked about Nixon and Robert Kennedy. And then it just continues, it's not just white identification that his heart was broken by JFK's assassination. Governors Ross Barnett and George Wallace, the hatred he saw all around, and these are, uh, governors in Mississippi, uh, and Alabama respectively, white supremacists. Uh, then, now the way I always say this, nineteen sixty-four Mississippi murders of James Chaney and those two white boys, and I do that deliberately, I've done that deliberately for a decade. Why is that, Gus? The number, they have stories when they talk about looking for these three young white boys where they found the corpse of a black child in a core t-shirt. They don't even name the black victim, blackmail, blackmail privilege again, they don't even name the black male. Who was the person? That was somebody's child? Who was it? They don't even do that. They kill Negroes all the time. And the mother of one of these two white boys who was killed, they made a whole lame lying movie about it, called it, uh, Mississippi Burning and lied about the FBI's role as though they weren't racist with J. Edgar Hoover, but one of the parents of those white boys said, hey, if it had just been blackmail James Chaney who was killed and they tossed his body in the trash, eh, another dead Nigga, he got what he deserved, moving on. So it wasn't, oh, I'm heartbroken about James Chaney, this black male who died in Mississippi trying to get black people, da, 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 da. Oh, my goodness, they killed two white boys. Oh, we can't allow that. What about James Chaney? Mississippi Burning, more laneness if you want to read or watch some fiction, dangerous fiction at that, Mississippi Burning. Next. Mm, mm, mm. Oh, my God. The whole past, he says, uh, Julius's premature death was what the two men might have eventually accomplished, accomplished together, had they been brought together, talking about Julius and Strom Thurmond. I realize now how deeply I'd always hoped to make the match, but now the time which I thought had plenty, I had plenty of, was gone. Oh, nauseous. I'm sorry about your husband, S.M.A. He was one of our first law graduates at State. It's a shame his life was cut short. He would have been a credit to the Negroes. She has to interrupt him, cause I couldn't, like, wait a minute, I thought he changed. I thought he wasn't a racist. And he say, oh, that, you know, he's just accustomed to that, it's habit, he's older, he's been saying that for sixty years, how's he gonna change? Next, let's see. Uh, da, da, da. My mother had died young too, uh, she says. My mother had died young too, uh, she says Jean died so young, my mother had died young too, but he didn't mention that. I thought he loved Kerry Butler so much. That was his best side piece, right? Uh huh. However, he did however insist on sending me some help, which he did in the form of several money orders and envelopes with a Washington address I didn't recognize. There were no, there were no letters within. Again, he was being cautious and I would have been an awful ingrate to second guess his generosity. Pause, what? What? Number one, again, Strom Thurmond was, I mean, it would be difficult to calculate now how wealthy he was, but it's nothing for him to send five thousand. She would have gotten probably way, or it's not even probably, that is a matter of record. When he died, his children, they divvied up the estate equally amongst his white offspring, the four of them. Essie May just got a little side check for like thirty dollars. That's what the nigger family gets, the backstreet family. That's what they get. Uh, let's see, she says, uh, little Julius, young Julius, more than lived up to his name becoming the man of the house. I think that's such a tacky phrase and I thought like the corollary, I don't hear people say that this young lady is the woman of the house. If the mom, you know, passes unfortunately or a medical issue or the parents just get divorced and the father ends up with custody, that does happen. I don't hear that phrase, the woman of the house? How are you the man of the house at twelve, thirteen, fourteen? That's not it. Talk about illogical and worthy of great pity. Even if you're forty-five, you would still not be a man, lying all the time. Lying to ourselves frequently, as we've been saying with Essie May. Uh, let's see, next. She talks about, this could have been a television program, they're moving out to California, I guess. Uh, tragedy, would they could have, it's, uh, I feel like this is one we've already seen, like imitation of life or one of those, the tragic mulatto story, they got twenty billions of those. She mentioned passing and Pinky in the book, although in the movie Pinky, the main, the protagonist is not passing. People just keep assuming that she is or would be. Uh, hmm, so many mentions, she says View Park was like a black Beverly Hills along with adjacent Baldwin Park and Ladera Heights View Park was about as good as a neighborhood could get for African-Americans of the time. Pause, this is just like the Savannah River Plant. The View Park was built in California deliberately as a subdivision. No niggers allowed. And in fact, it was one of those where it said explicitly in the deed, you have to be white to live in View Park. That gradually changed Essie May and company and then it became exclusively niggers. And if you follow it all the way out, now the racism, white supremacy, full circle. Mr. Fuller said, white people, what they do, they practice racism, they'll be in the area and say, ah, the niggers, get out of here, get out of here, eh. And they make coon village and what have you, and then they come over and rape you or what have you. And then when they get tired of that and they say, oh man, you know what? It's boring around here. It's lame around here. You know what would be a cool place to go live? View Park. And they viewed the View Park and it rise, they increase the cost of everything. And then, oh man, now is this gonna stay a black area? Or is this just gonna be where the white people hang out and the niggers used to live in View Park? Cause that's the story now, two thousand twenty-one. White supremacy racism, that's about as good as it gets for black people if you see things over the generation. Let's see, over generations, plural. Uh, there were many moments where I would insert James Brown, black and proud, this was one. We had a few Asian neighbors, a few Mexicans, a few whites, but this was largely the black bourgeoisie. Not that we turned our backs on our brothers and sisters in Watts. The black churches of Los Angeles, which were still located in the old South Central District, were filled every Sunday with worshippers from the good addresses in quotes, and the collection plates that were passed were filled as well. Whatever. Uh, the Watts riots of nineteen sixty-five made me rethink exactly what kind of racial paradise I was living in. It can't happen here was what most of the people I knew thought. Perhaps we were too insulated. Now again, View Park, they didn't even allow niggers. The place that she's bragging about living, that was like recent to even allow niggers like her in the vicinity. Much less, the Black Panther Party started in California, the racial paradise. And again, just take the lazy one, Womp of Other Suns was mentioned this week. They poisoned Nat King Cole's dog, and Natalie King Cole, and burned nigger in their yard. That is not how I conceive of paradise. Let's see. She says, uh, so Watts happened, lots of people killed, property damage. I thought she was talking about Rodney King for a second, like, did she say Watts or did she say, oh, okay, she said Watts, got it, got it. Not that far ahead in story yet, okay. Said, I knew I had to do my part to turn that anger into effort. I began to finish school. I registered to vote. Oh, nausea again, which I had not done out of fear and intimidation. Now even that, I don't ever, I never, even right now today, two thousand twenty-two, as long as white supremacy exists, I never accept criticism about black people not voting for any reason. When you have this much terrorism and shenanigans about black people voting, where you come up with all these excuses and tricks and, oh, you gotta have a D and, 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 sometimes we count your ballots, sometimes we don't. And all the rest of it, I'm cool. If a black person, for whatever reason, they say they want to vote, they don't want to vote, I do not accept any criticism of black people for what they do or don't do with relation to voting. Anyway, I do think that is another pitiful as well. We're angry about racism, white supremacy, what do we do? Vote. I could see it is a little bit more acceptable for this time period because there were many, many black people who thought the same thing at this time period. And then slowly began to realize, oh, we're not gonna be able to vote our way out of white supremacy racism. Shout to Obama. She continues, uh, it gave me such a sense of power of participation, of pure citizenship, I don't even know what that means, that voter registration reaffirmed my Americanness. Yikes, I don't know what that means either. That sounds like a major metaphor, which I had felt I lost or at least misplaced when I was in South Carolina. I have no idea what that means. Does anybody have their Americanness? Is it in your back pocket? In your purse maybe? Did you put it in storage during Corona? She continues, I became a Democrat. I don't know what that, you voted for Jimmy Carter? I don't know what that means. Uh, though I never told my father, not that he asked, I also joined the NAACP, so did Neely Fuller Jr. Uh, she says, she received her BA in business education in nineteen sixty-nine, the year Fred Hampton was assassinated, Black Panther Party and Mark Clark. Uh, that was one of the happiest days of my life when she got her BA in business education. I only wish that I had a parent there to share it with me. Saddest book I have ever read. Mary dead at this point, her pretend mother, and I guess the children's pretend grandmother. Kerry Butler is dead, her biological mother, died at thirty-eight, I believe it was. And then Strom Thurmond is, my father did send me a stunning diamond and emerald necklace and matching earrings, having me receive my degree, he later said was one of his happiest moments. Teacher that he was, he always urged me to complete my education. I'm all about education. I will say though, the money and the jewelry, I don't think that should be minimized. I think if you're a confused victim of white supremacy who has not had a lot, uh, Mary was not rich, Kerry Butler was not rich. I am not rich. So having someone, as I said, you do the inflation calculator, who is, I don't care what his behavior is, who is regularly, and then you've got children and your partner dies, the children's father dies, and he's regularly thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars, he's giving to you and pick up the phone, you need something, I got it, don't worry, can get your children in school and all that. That would greatly contribute to the self-delusion, greatly. She even tries to reject the money at one point. He's like, what are you talking about, nigger? You've got these children, you're gonna need this money, you're moving out to California? You can't even get a hotel driving out to California, take this money. That's logical. Even Julius, I can totally understand, but they're not even gonna let me get a job as a janitor. I have a law degree. And I can't get a job. That's what I mean about now. You're gonna tell that thirteen-year-old, you're the man of the house when Julius Washington has a law degree. And I gotta wonder, am I the man of the house? Saddest book I've ever read. Oh, what I just say, Julius got a law degree and he said over and over and over, I can't get a job, I can't get hired, when I do get a job, I don't get promoted? Is that what Essie May said? Essie May said, in my part-time teaching, my initial subjects were typing and shorthand, but once I had my degree, she didn't get a law degree, she just got a BA. Not that I'm degrading that, but I mean, it's a substantial difference in getting a BA and getting a law degree. She said, the fact that I also had a nursing background enabled me to teach courses in the burgeoning medical business field. I was always able to get jobs, good jobs, all around Los Angeles. Do not mistake my point of emphasis for my hatred of black females, although I'm wildly accused of that. This is the system of white supremacy to this day, two thousand twenty-two, in the era of blackmail privilege. Most likely to be unemployed, Gus T, retired firefighter. That's how Strom Thurmond at all run the plantation. That's what we've heard in this book over and over and over, and it hasn't mattered where Essie May has traveled. All these black males pop, just like her husband. Now, the other question, I assumed the blackmails that she was looking at didn't go to school? No count, shiftless, maybe rapists, that's what I thought. Maybe they were closer to Julius than I thought because he died a drunkard at forty-six and he had a law degree. Blackmail privilege. Uh, let's see, she says, my father was right, that degree was a passport, that was not the case for Julius. The confusion, she says Strom Thurmond had come through for Nixon, who went on to defeat the relatively liberal Democrat, Hubert Humphrey, I don't know what that means, relatively liberal. The Republicans had been deeply concerned about the seriously racist independent governor campaign of George Wallace of Alabama. That's another one, seriously racist? Is someone like comically racist? Pretend racist? Mildly racist? Confusion is, and again, this is one I would point now. Does Essie May Washington Williams sound like she has a better understanding of what white, white supremacy racism is and how it works than someone classified as white? Let's ask it this way, who seems more informed about racism? Strom Thurmond? Essie May? I try not to ask dumb questions, but that might be the closest that I'm gonna get to a dumb question. Uh, let's see, she said, the cruel reflection of the atavistic nigger hater, talking about George Wallace, may have sobered up Strom Thurmond, as did the assassinations of Martin Luther King and Robert Kennedy, as well as the student revolts at Columbia and other fine schools, including my college, whose name had now been formally changed to South Carolina State. Full stop, sober up is a metaphor? I don't know what you're talking about. Many, 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 many white people saw Martin Luther King be assassinated, we still have racism. It did not stop them from practicing white supremacy and many, 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 many white people said that nigger got what was due. Had been saying that in fact for years. She would have lived through that, she could have been sent some there about that too. I wasn't even alive at the time and I am very aware of this. Uh, I don't know why Robert Kennedy's assassination would have sobered him up. Uh, let's see. We kept mentioning the Orangeburg massacre and I was thinking like, that might just come up in the chronology of the book and it did. We could have just waited and took that one in stride. Uh, when it finally does come up at three students are killed, she says, because it was a small black school, the tragedy barely made the press. True, but I know my father was aware of it, full stop. How do you know this? Did you talk to him? Did he send you a telegram? Did he call? She continues, just like the Willie Earl lynching when the, when he first became governor and before his ambitions sent him careening to the right, he was deeply ashamed. Again, how do you know this? Did he say this? If he, if they had talked about all of this and he said anything that suggested that he felt bad about all this, he was ashamed, he felt guilty, this shouldn't have happened, she would have quoted him. This is another one, I'd say, ooh, confusion is lethal. Like you are defending and assuming things about him, what is that even based on? This is another one where you would have a whole lot of white people say, those niggers got what they, they, they got what they should have, got what they deserve. Out here at the bowling alley, that is a Wellsling moment for sure because she talked about the significance of the bowling ball, the bowling pins, all that, and the ISIS papers. We talked about that in the Big Lebowski. Out here causing a ruckus. Get him here with our bowling pins. Next she'd be trying to do all the rest of it, white genetic annihilation. She continues. Heroes are entitled to their idiosyncrasies. Now that, even that right there, I've read a book or two, I know what idiosyncrasies are. So like, uh, their differences, if you have like a special interest fetish, one might say. That, even that might be the better word, instead of idiosyncrasies. Their pleasures, their fetishes. Uh, let's see. She says, my father's was, yeah, fetish would be the better word right there. Idiosyncrasies is not the correct word, fetish would be a better word. Heroes are entitled to their fetishes. My father's was an obsession with beautiful, very young women. Word should be accurate here. I'm gonna have to say child because we got the same pattern. Uh, Kerry Butler was fifteen when his previous wife, Jean, they got married when she was twenty-one, but they said he caught, she caught his eye at fifteen. That's not a very young woman, those are children. When I saw him, his secret, all these lies, secrets, and ooh, raping children, it's raping black children. Secret courtship with a twenty-one-year-old former Miss South Carolina name, Nancy Moore was breaking in the press. The sleek Nancy, doesn't that seem like some white admiration? Not that I'm surprised, we pointed that out before, but the sleek, and particularly because she's talked, she's got some weight issues it seems, where she feels some type of way about her, and she even talked about the stress of racism and lying Strom Thurmond, raping, child raping Strom Thurmond, where she meets with him and they don't go out to eat a healthy meal, so she sits and eats the soda pop and food that she bought by herself. Very common in the system of white supremacy racism. But she's talking about Nancy, the sleek Nancy, a Duke graduate, I don't think black people could go to Duke at that time, who also attended the University of South Carolina Law or South University of South Carolina, the Gamecocks. Uh, that's what their nickname is. The sleek Nancy grew up in Aiken where her father was a scientist at the Savannah River Nuclear Plant. Where he probably practiced racism and poisoned the whole region. So now it's one of the most contaminated sites in the world. And, and you hear what I, the, the second audio? You can't even fish there. Why is that? The fish are radioactive. Thank you to Nancy's father, Strom Thurmond got him the property. And mistreated some black people while it was there, you hear that? Said they would send black people into the radioactive facility, oh, you don't need that monitor, give me, give me that monitor, give me that, you know, you don't need that. Just get on in there and scrub it up good. That's Nancy's father. Wonder how long he worked there at the Savannah, what is it, the Savannah River Nuclear Plant. Environmental racism. Pause again, I've been pointing it out, so money, that's a big one, in terms of big themes for the book. Television, this book starts in the nineteen twenties, they are, you don't have Playstation. Ain't no iPhone, ain't no Hulu. No Netflix to whine about they lost subscribers, none of that. You don't have big flat screen TVs, folks over here, the white people, uh, Folks over here, the white people in Capitol Hill, got a seventy-seven-inch television. Four K delivered. Essie May didn't have any of that for the majority of this book. Nobody even had a television, and television has dominated. Andy Griffith Show and Key Largo and From Here to Eternity, every single movie that Mr. Fuller talks about. Pinky, I already said that one. And movie on top, a movie on top, a movie, Nat King Cole Show, at a time when you didn't even have that many television networks. YouTube, or none of that. And television has dominated this book. Then to get to this week, Jim Neighbors, who played Gomer Pyle on the hit show The Andy Griffith, with all this anti-sex net, that's another trend, too. Not just all this child rape and everything, but dang, even the stuff on television is all this risque content and all that. There's also secret. All this hush-hushing, not finding out till later, like, whoa, what was going on? Whoa. "Like Jean Crouch, Nancy Moore had been hired as my father's administrative assistant, and from there, love conquered all." Full stop. Now, come on. Come on. This is one where I pop out and say, "Ooh, let's go back and see what the biography says about all this with Jean Crouch." Old Strom, the biography, Chapter Nineteen, "The Beauty Queen." "A brownish blonde with fair complexion, and come on, blue eyes." The state reported, "The new Miss South Carolina is five-six, weighs one hundred sixteen pounds, and is thirty-five, twenty-two, thirty-five." Jesus Christ, talk about objectification. "For those who keep score, she already had a string of beauty titles, her mother said, even in the first grade. She had the curious look of amazement and wonder she has today. Strom hadn't met her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Paul R. Moore. Mr. Moore was an engineer who had moved..." Oh, my God. How did I miss that? How did I miss that? Let me give it, give it again. "Who had moved to Aiken about twelve years earlier, a year or so before Thurmond left for Washington to work for the Savannah River Plant." Again, "Strom confidently proceeded to marry Nancy in Aiken a few days before Christmas, joined by a handful of family and close friends. After one week honeymoon on Grand Bahama Island, they held a public reception at the campus home of University of South Carolina President Thomas F. Jones. Cake, nuts, and cider punch were served. Some fifteen hundred from all sections of South Carolina friends, relatives, acquaintances, and strangers stood in line on a bright chilly late December afternoon. No black people were seen among them. Many women wore fur jackets. Those attended included Harry Dent. The interesting thing about Strom Thurmond, Dent said, is I don't ever remember in any way the senator ever rebuking me or Fred. We would always tell him exactly what we thought, and it was okay. The marriage turned out to be a big plus, especially having those kids, and the children turned out great." Nancy proved to be a solid campaign manager, especially in nineteen seventy-eight, when she and the children moved to Columbia for the fall campaign and traveled around the state in Strom Trek, a recreation, a recreational vehicle. The older children attended the fully-integrated AC Moore Elementary School, and the campaign literature portrayed an active and happy family. Nancy was good at working the crowds." Skipping down again, uh... Jim Clyburn, who is still in office now in South Carolina, set the tone for the evening when he introduced, let me back up a little bit, "Before James Clyburn was elected in nineteen ninety-two as South Carolina's first black congressman since the post-Reconstruction period, he served for years as executive director of the South Carolina Human Affairs Commission and hosted an annual bipartisan political roast. It served as a charitable fundraiser. When Don Fowler got roasted in the mid-nineteen eighties, Clyburn invited Nancy Thurmond to serve as roast mistress. She accepted, prepared carefully, and presided with just the right bite of humor and political humor for political insiders. Clyburn set the tone for the evening when he introduced the head table. The octogenarian Strom sat next to Emily Clyburn, and Jim Clyburn concluded his introduction of Thurmond with a slight pause, then added, "Now, Senator, that's my wife sitting next to you, so you keep your hands on top of the table." Thurmond joined in the howling laughter of a knowing and knowledgeable biracial audience. Perhaps no politician anywhere can match Strom's legendary image for lechery. Socialite Washington writer Sally Quinn tells the story from the nineteen fifties of a reception. "My mother and I headed for the buffet table as we were reaching for the shrimp. Both of us jumped and let out a shriek. Senator Strom Thurmond, grinning from ear to ear, had one hand on my behind and the other on my mother's. As I recall, we were both quite flattered, and I thought it terribly funny and wicked of old Strom." Talking about the incident on a TV talk show at the end of nineteen ninety-seven while promoting her book, Quinn said her mother had grown up in Savannah, knew Thurmond, and said, "Strom, you old devil." "Strom's image for sexual exploits only grew just when and where," he said. It is disputed. Some say at the funeral of Florida Congressman Claude Pepper, who championed the cause of senior citizens and others after Thurmond began siring children. But Senator John Tower of Texas made the earthy remark, "When he dies, they'll have to beat his pecker down with a baseball bat in order to close the coffin lid." Word got back to Strom Thurmond, who sent an aide out to buy a Sears thumper baseball bat and delivered it to Tower. He placed it on permanent display atop the mantle in the Senate Republican Cloak Room. Robert Ariel, the talented cartoonist for the state, sneaks a baseball bat into occasional cartoons about Thurmond. At least one professional woman from South Carolina, seeing Thurmond on a business matter, suddenly found herself grabbed, groped on the breast, and the recipient of a prolonged kiss on the mouth. Women news reporters have shared the experience. Another incident involved a female sled agent, we just heard about them, assigned as a driver for Thurmond in the nineteen eighties. He would have been like eighties at this point. Unlike Hollings, who relied on staff to drive him on official trips in South Carolina, Thurmond, for decades, called upon sled. Tales circulated among the agents include one of Thurmond calling a female sled driver after both had retired to their motel rooms on an overnight trip. The story goes that he asked her to come to his room. She knocked, and he said for her to come in. She opened the door and asked what he wanted. He sat on the bed in his underwear, padded the bed, and invited her to come and sit beside him. She closed the door and returned to her room. After her report, sled quit assigning female agents as drivers. It goes on. I will leave it there for the moment. Give you one more, last one. Uh, although, wait a minute, yeah. So, he's sixty-six, she's twenty-two when they get married. Although the problems with their marriage would not be acknowledged until much later, Nancy had become the subject of Washington rumors, implying she spent an inordinate amount of time with a young male Thurmond aide and other men. Her behavior seemed erratic. A few years earlier, the Thurmans carpool activities of their teenage children with their neighbors in Washington's northern Virginia suburbs, fellow Senator Charles Chuck Robb and his wife Linda, eldest daughter of former President Lyndon Johnson. Strom, by then an octogenarian, drove the van one day when Linda's mother, Lady Bird Johnson, was visiting. Linda remarked to him what attractive children he had. Strom leaned over, placed his hand on her shoulder, and said in her ear, "They could have been yours." I'll leave it there, uh, for Strom being in love and all the rest of it. Incidentally, it wouldn't surprise me or stun me if Nancy was doing her, or this is one of those open arrangements or whatever they want to call it, polyamorous, whatever. Uh, he's sixty-six, she's twenty-two, plus he's already been married, you know, several times over at this point, but I mean, if he's doing all this, everything that we've heard, who cares? She wants to step out and mess around? I can too. We can have our public image. She could help you with the campaign. She could step out and have her fun. I could step out and have my fun. Everybody wins. Old Strom, back to the book, uh, the book we're reading, dear Senator. Uh, oh, my God. She says, "How in the world could he have the audacity to marry someone a third his age? This wasn't a generation gap. This was the Grand Canyon." Child rape, really, "but he got away with it. And instead of becoming the laughing stock of politics, he became a role model, and not just for aspiring dirty old men. Only in Hollywood and Washington could a man get away with this and enhance his popularity." Wrong. Jeffrey Epstein, there seem to be lots and lots. Woody Allen, I guess he's Hollywood, but he's in New York. Seems to be lots. Prince Andrew, lots of examples of white men and white women who do this over and over and over, and... "We always shook hands when we first met, and it was, and it always hurt. I somehow hoped that he would invite me home to the wedding, but that was unrealistic." Worthy of great pity. She continues, "Strom Thurmond, it's not that Strom Thurmond ever swore me to secrecy. He never swore me to anything. He trusted me, and I respected him." Is his conduct respectable? Sixty-six and twenty-two? Forty-six and twenty-one? Twenty-three and fifteen? I'm ignoring the racism for the moment. Just, is what you've heard, is his conduct with the sled, women coming to drive him, right? "We loved each other in our deeply repressed ways, and that was our social contract." What? It's the saddest book I've ever read. I would have loved to talk to someone, but I couldn't. Just gotta keep all that repressed all up. Can't even talk to my husband about all this. "See what diet and exercise can get you. He showed me a silver-framed picture of his beauty queen in her tiara. He was as cocky as a schoolboy who had just gotten lucky with a homecoming princess, and that's about the size of it." But the thing that made, that made me highlight that and special highlight cutler, Neely Fuller Jr. asked the question, he says, "All this talk about you want long life and be healthy, and you want to be here, for what? I'm gonna eat broccoli and carrots and spinach and stay away from fried chicken and drink a lot of water, for what? So I can stay here and rape children? Stay here and practice racism? Do a little of both? Kerry Butler, there you go. Do it at the same time. That's why we need to have you around until you're almost a hundred and one to practice racism and rape children? Just make it clear. What's, what's the purpose of long life, for what? If it's just to sit around and practice racism, like, come on, man, come on. Put some fried chicken on his plate. Let's hurry up and get him on out of here." Uh, she says, "I couldn't help feeling a twinge of jealousy. I somehow fancied being his only child." Even though I was a state secret, really? "I knew as a parent how much you loved your children. Now I saw myself having to share that love with a new generation, one that he could have a photo or could have photo opportunities with." Dr. Gerald Horn told us down at Clemson, they have a photograph of Strom Thurmond and his white offspring. And then off on the side, around the corner, the alley, they have a picture of Essie May. Uh, let's see. Oh, my God. Strom Thurmond, he doesn't like this fellow, Mr. Fortis, he doesn't want to get on the Supreme Court. He says, "I got it. My father boasted as if he just shot a raccoon at the Orangeburg Hunt." The grand American coon hunt happened just a few weeks ago this year, two thousand twenty-two. Incidentally, when I heard that, I said, "Peter still allows this? They have dogs running coons up a tree?" And this is, nobody's... Wait a minute now. We've had enough of this. You can go, you want to clock a nigger upside the head or fifty of them, but we've had enough of you terrorizing. This is fifty-seven years of you terrorizing coons. Not the, you know, nigger coons, the coons we like. Loyalty to her father, she says. She talks about enjoying the idea of changing him. I don't need, I don't know what that means. I don't know what evidence she has of this. Confusion is lethal. Uh, the last thing I'll get in, then we can get on. Uh, she gets more money. Let me see. She said, "Blacks and whites were rarely seen breaking bread together." I don't know if he means like eating food together in Atlanta, or if this is like a metaphor for something, because I mean... The Atlanta child murders happened not too soon after all of this, and that was a big part of the theory, that it was some old Strom Thurmond, some white people raping children here as well, with all of that, that this was not just old Wayne Williams, uh, in this case, but neither here nor there. James Brown cowbell in there as well. Uh, all of the, the afros and everything else, like, wow. Uh, yeah, I'll leave it there. I think you all did a great job talking about the exchange with the children and how they can go from being honest to confused. Again, I was just stunned that they would have to wait so long to be told the truth, where you can allow them to believe a lie for a very long time. And then, okay, now, now let's give it to you. Let's start with the truth from the very beginning, so we don't have to come and undo a lot of lies. Incidentally, there should be some erosion of credibility, like, if they lied about this, what else have they lied to us about? And I think some people do think that way, like, man, and then we turn around and get upset as parents. Not that I am one, but like, man, they don't listen to us and all the rest of it. Well, maybe you should stop lying to them.
Yep, I'm lying to you.
Amen. Uh, we will push off to audio segment number two. We should have ample time to share once that segment is all done. Uh, pitiful read. Learned a lot, but pitiful read. Essie May Washington-Williams, "Dear Senator," picking up in chapter eight, Context of White Supremacy.
I had gotten remarried myself in nineteen seventy, just when I reached a state of contentment that I didn't need a social life. Love walked right in. I met James Stoner at a dance at a parochial school where I had been teaching. A priest introduced us. James was tall, handsome, a great dancer, and a wonderful cook. He had just retired as a baker. He also had that wonderful deep voice that I was so susceptible to. He was sixty-two. I was forty-four. Maybe I shouldn't have been that hard on my father. On age differences, I reflected. What mattered was shared emotions and feelings. James and I dated for one year. The kids loved him, especially because of the elaborate meals he would prepare. Our marriage, alas, lasted only one year. James would fall asleep in the living room watching television, then complain that the children were making too much noise and waking him up. He soon moved back in with his brother-in-law, which was where he had lived before we met. He moved back east and met another woman. He lived with her, though he never got divorced from me. When he died at eighty-two, I got his social security, a windfall I never expected. Whatever happened to my personal life, I never failed to find refuge in religion. I became an active member in the Congregational Church of Christian Fellowship, not far from my home. Julius had been an Episcopalian, but he didn't go to church very often. I had traditionally been a Baptist, but I decided I preferred the congregational style, in which the congregation has the final word, unlike the Baptists or Methodists, where the minister runs the show. Sundays were my favorite day of the week. We were all getting older. As I reached my fifties, I was beginning to feel it, to accept the fact that retirement was not that far away. I unfortunately developed adult-onset diabetes, which runs in the Thurmond family. I unfortunately developed adult onset diabetes, which runs in the Thurmond family. Two of my father's sisters suffered from that as well, though my father and I never discussed this as a family problem. I had to inject myself with insulin every day. I lost a lot of energy, not so my father. He told me he would rather expire than retire. And that as long as he was vigorous, he would continue to run for office. I wasn't sure the voters of South Carolina would agree with him, but with each election, his opponents would make an issue of Strom Thurmond's advancing age. Each opponent would lose. However, nineteen seventy-eight appeared to have the makings of my father's Waterloo. He was now seventy-six, and the man who wanted to replace him seemed to have all the right stuff. This was Charlie Pug Ravenel, a thirty-nine-year-old progressive Democrat who styled himself as a Southern Kennedy. Like the Kavines, Ravenel had gone to Harvard, where he had been the star quarterback of the football team. He'd been nicknamed the Gambler, as much for his high-risk plays as for his evocation of Gaylord Ravenel, the suave riverboat gambler in the musical Show Boat. Pug Ravenel was anything but a Southern aristocrat, though. His father had been a shipyard worker in Charleston. He had won a scholarship to Phillips Executory Academy in New Hampshire en route to Harvard, then Harvard Business School, and then had gone on to success as an investment banker on Wall Street. Carpetbagger was the only word my father had for him, despite the place of his birth. He's a Yankee with a Southern accent. Look where his campaign money comes from, Wall Street and Park Avenue. My father scoffed. Four years before, Ravenel had moved back from New York to run for governor and was disqualified by a court ruling that he had not met the state's residency requirement. Now he was back with a vengeance and with President Jimmy Carter in his corner. He challenged my father to debate him, but my father wanted to avoid a talking contest. "I'm running on my record. Let him run on his, if he has one," was Strom Thurmond's retort. His campaign strategy was designed by Lee Atwater, who would become notorious as Ronald Reagan's Stop-at-Nothing Pitbull. Atwater would parade out my father's children wearing T-shirts that said, "Vote for my daddy", and stage endless photo opportunities with his beauty queen wife to show how vital my father actually was, hair plugs and all. Strom Thurmond grew Elvis-style sideburns, donned a Stetson hat that made him look like a hipster cowboy, slid down from firepoles, went jogging for the press. At the same time, he was presenting my father as a poster boy for the fountain of youth, Atwater attacked Ravenel's New York Social Register Ivy League support base, playing the carpetbagger card over and over. In the end, my father won a resounding victory, one he has never, never in doubt of, even if I was. Pug Ravenel, who went back to banking, later served nearly a year in prison for financial misdoings. Years later, he was granted a pardon by Bill Clinton. And so it went, year after year, the unsinkable Strom Thurmond, going on and on as the grand old man of Southern politics. As the country became more and more conservative in the Reagan years, his position in the party and his stature as an icon continued to grow. No more was he seen as the racist redneck, but as the dominant figure of the region that was coming to dominate the American political scene, the voice of the new South with the echoes of the old that provided soothing traditional reassurance to a cautious nation. We would have Carter from Georgia, Clinton from Arkansas, the Bushes from Texas, all Southerners. Despite Clinton's liberalism, my father saw him as a good old boy, just the same, and regarded him as a friend. Perhaps they bonded over their attraction to young women? Whatever the Dixiecrat had become a salon. He was one of the chief champions of Clarice Thomas's controversial nomination to the Supreme Court. It didn't matter that Thomas was a conservative Republican, he was a black man, and my father was right behind him, one hundred percent. Ben Tillman must have been turning over in his grave. The older my father got, the more reflective he had become about his own father, although not about my mother. I thought he might want to have some closure in his life and make peace with her memory and how he felt about her. Maybe he did too, but he kept putting off that day of reckoning. The man sincerely believed he was going to live forever, so for him, time was not of the essence. Into his nineties, he still bragged to me that he ran every morning, swam every week in the Senate pool, kept those barbells by the desk, and made me punch him in his hard, flat stomach to prove to me he was in fighting shape. He got a little repetitive, but a man that age in that shape had to be forgiven a lot. He became more personally generous to me as he got older. By now, he was constantly traveling the world as head of the Senate Armed Services Committee, touring military bases in Germany and Turkey, conferring with Anwar Sadat in Egypt, revisiting the Normandy beaches he had stormed on D-Day. He made a special point to tell me when he visited Africa, as if that showed how enlightened he had become. We never discussed apartheid. He had amazing stamina, flying to China and back for a weekend. Wherever he went, he would bring back souvenirs, little trinkets, letter openers, bookmarks, keychains, plastic jewelry, decorative tiles that he would always give to me in a care package. When I came to see him at the Senate, in the past, he had been even more thoughtful. He had given me a dictionary to give to Wanda when she was finishing high school. He had given me those expensive jewels when I got my BA. When I went on and completed my MA degree at the University of Southern California, that was icing on my father's cake. For that milestone, he presented me with a string of genuine pearls and a diamond-encrusted giant pearl pendant. In the box was a note that said, "Congratulations," and nothing more. There was no signature, no love. Secrecy had to take priority over affection, but that jewelry was the high-water mark. As the years went by, puka shell necklaces were the rule, which he would collect whenever he visited our military bases in Hawaii and the Pacific, and always give to me. From my perspective, it was the thought that counted. Strom Thurmond did romanticize his father. He was my grandfather as well, but I never embraced his memory. I couldn't, because the ghost of Ben Tillman was always standing behind him with his pitchfork aimed at me. But I humored my father's own filial piety. In his office in the Senate, a special place of honor held a framed letter from his father upon young Strom's graduation from Clemson in nineteen twenty-three. He read it to me on every visit for the last twenty years of his life, and gave me a copy each time I was there. I didn't dare say I already had one. To him, this letter was as sacred as the Magna Carta. It read, "Remember your God. Take good care of your body and tax your nervous system as little as possible. Obey the laws of the land. Be strictly honest. Associate only with the best people, morally and intellectually. Think three times before you act, once, and if you are in doubt, don't act at all. Be prompt on your job to the minute. Read at every spare chance and think over and try to remember what you have read. Do not forget that skill and integrity are the keys to success. Affectionately, Dad." I wish he, as my father, had written me a letter like that for my souvenir files, for my own wall of honor, but Strom Thurmond was the most punctilious man who ever lived, and he would have never taken this perceived risk. He was a military man from Clemson, cadet to decorated soldier to chairman of the Senate Armed Services Committee, the best friend the soldiers and sailors of America could have. He was his father's son, following every rule to the letter by the book. The one time in his life that he broke the rules was with my mother, his one and only walk on the wild side. I was Exhibit A, proof that Strom Thurmond had a soul. But by the same token of his eternal caution and propriety, I was proof he dared not present. That's why, even at the end of his life, he never stepped forward to celebrate our relationship. He must have been thinking of his legacy, his posterity. The Southern gentleman in him that prevented him from forsaking me also prevented him from embracing me and all the glory that embrace might have brought him. He would always be a conservative in war and in love. Chapter nine, Reckoning. The last decade of my father's life was filled with glory. It was counterweighted with tragedy. In nineteen ninety-one, Nancy Thurmond sought a separation from my father. Many South Carolinians dubious of this May-December romance believed that Nancy had married my father, thinking that he would soon pass away, and that she would inherit his Senate seat, as had another bright and ambitious Southern belle, Lindy Boggs of Louisiana, when her powerful husband died in a plane crash. When my father lived on and on and on, the word was, she got depressed and simply couldn't take it anymore. "I suppose she wanted her freedom," he said to me in a rare moment of helplessness. Then, in nineteen ninety-three, my father's eldest daughter, the half-sister I had never met, was killed in a Columbia intersection by a drunk woman driver. Nancy Moore Thurmond was only twenty-two. She was just about to graduate from the University of South Carolina and was planning to follow in her mother's polkretudinous footsteps by entering the Miss South Carolina pageant as Miss Akin. She had her own designer jewelry company, Designs by Nancy, and was planning to go to law school and become a part of the great Thurmond legal tradition. The night she died, she was walking to the apartment of her boyfriend with a chest set she had just bought at Eckert Drugs. What a tragic waste. The drunk driver was a lawyer herself, who represented bar owners seeking liquor licenses. My father detested alcohol. He had often pressed for higher liquor taxes and had spoken of the horrors of drunk driving on the Senate floor. Now his worst nightmare was coming true. I thought he would use his immense power to punish his daughter's killer in a torture worthy of Torquemada of the Spanish Inquisition. But the restraint he showed in his darkest hour made me respect him a great deal. The press, which had never been kind to my father, inflamed the issue by suggesting that young Nancy had been contributorially negligent by jaywalking. The possibility was also raised that she had been drunk herself. I felt very badly for my father when the poor girl's body had to be subjected to an autopsy. There was no alcohol in her. She, like I, was a non-drinker, her father's daughter. The public still had the feeling that the drunk driver, who admitted to having been to four different bars that evening, was being railroaded because the victim was Strom Thurmond's child. Ultimately, the jury convicted the woman and gave her a two-year prison sentence out of the possible fifteen for a drunk-driving felony. She served one year. In a sense, the light verdict was a judgment against my father. The people of South Carolina may have always elected him, but tremendous resentment brewed under the surface. I read in the papers that he broke down at his daughter's burial at the family plot in Edgefield's Willowbrook Cemetery, just across the road from Old Buncombe, a road that black people still figuratively did not cross. Vice President Al Gore, whose relatively liberal senator father had been described once to me by my father as a pinko for supporting Harry Truman, attended the service, as did many other national dignitaries. I had never seen my father weep. I would have liked to. It made him more, much more human. And I would have liked to have been there to comfort him, to put my arms around him, something I had never done. Nancy was my family too, and I couldn't help but regret being deprived of my right to mourn her. I wanted to join my half-brothers and half-sisters. I wanted to meet them, to hug them too. The younger sister Julie was a diabetic. I had become a diabetic. Two of my father's sisters were diabetic. It ran in the family, our family. I wanted to speak with them about it. The Thurmond boys seemed perfect, one a tennis star, both lawyers-to-be, both surely with their own hidden problems that I, as a guidance counselor, not to mention a sister, might be able to help them with. I had helped many students over the years find a career or a college or a change of direction in life. It was deeply satisfying to help these students with personal and emotional problems, so they could focus on their educations. I thus considered my academic career a great and gratifying success. I had changed many, many people's lives. In that sense, I had realized my own dreams and goals of changing the world. I had changed their worlds, and I was sure for the better. I would have loved sharing the wisdom of my years with my other secret family, but I was excluded. All I could do was call my father on the phone and offer my condolences, which he received graciously, as he would from one of his valued constituents. I didn't fault myself for wanting to be different. I was different. A couple of years after this tragedy, the press reported that my father's estranged-wife Nancy was herself arrested in Akin for drunk driving. The paper said she made the grave mistake of trying to bribe the arresting officer. The incident was videotaped by the patrol car. Nancy was locked up for the night in the Akin County Jail. She later lost her license, went into rehab, and then admitted a twenty-year ongoing addiction to alcohol and diet pills. Being perfect in the public eye wasn't as easy as it seemed. The state's maternal role model, the author of two model parenting books, Mother's Medicine and Happy Mother, Happy Child, had tumbled off her pedestal ignominiously. Press vultures, always looking to say the worst about a Thurmond, had one more field day when Nancy admitted publicly that she too might well have drunkenly taken the life of someone else's innocent child. Again, I felt sorry for her, and I felt sorry for my father, both bereaved and humiliated by the demon rum he so abhorred. Strom Thurmond detested scandal. Mister Straight Arrow, he detested the mere suggestion of impropriety. So it was one of the unkinder cuts that, right in the middle of losing his wife and losing his daughter, my very existence was coming out of the closet to haunt him. "Thurmond and the Girl from Edgefield" was the headline of a several-page nineteen ninety-two Washington Post Style section story that attempted to out both my father and myself. I refused to give an interview, and I was heartened that all my sorority sisters from Orangeburg declined as well. But the tone of the piece implied that I had been bribed by my father to keep silent, and that for all his changes, he was still Simon Legree. "He's a man descended from slave owners. That's how he came to know black people," was how the article ended, on a quote from a local black lawyer, obviously no fan of the senator. In nineteen ninety-eight, the writer of the article, Marilyn Thompson, collaborated with South Carolina political writer Jack Bass on a very unauthorized biography, Old Strom, which reiterated the accusations of the illegitimate black- which reiterated the accusations of the illegitimate black daughter and the cover-up. Jack Bass even showed up at my house in Los Angeles. I tried to be as polite as I could, telling him, as I had told Miss Thompson years before, she was on this case like the dogged Inspector Javert in Les Misérables, that we were family friends, which was technically true. We were family and we were friends, but I wasn't trying to split hairs. I wanted them to go away. I valued my father's privacy, and I valued my own. Neither when the article nor the book appeared did my father mention the story to me. He never had asked me to cover anything up, and he didn't these times either. The only family response that I was aware of was that one of my father's sisters chided the state newspaper in Columbia, which reprinted the article for publishing trash. Once I did ask my father how to deal with the press. His answer was simple: ignore them. When both Big Julius and Little Julius had goaded me to go public with my heritage, they both assumed that the revelation would destroy my father personally and politically. They wanted him out of the Senate and out of our black hair, and I was the one to do it. I always thought they were wrong, and I was right in so thinking. Strom Thurmond had more lives than a litter of cats. He was a political Superman. If there were a kryptonite that could destroy him, Essie Mae Washington Williams was not it. Of course, I wasn't sure, though, and I wasn't about to risk being wrong. But in nineteen seventy-two, W.W. Mims, the eccentric owner and editor of the Edgefield Advertiser, and a man who had a perennial blood feud with my father, printed a front-page, full-page headline charging that Strom Thurmond had colored offspring while parading as a devout segregationist. Mims was compromised in his objectivity by pretending himself as a write-in candidate in that year's Senate campaign, which my father won in his usual landslide. Mims's scoop, which he tried to promulgate all over the state and nation, didn't make a dent in my father's popularity, nor did the Post article or the biography. My father, as attorneys would say, was judgment-proof.
Alrighty, and we will wrap it up next week. Finish up chapter nine, the acknowledgements, and all done. I think we'll even squeeze in President Joe Biden's eulogy when Old Strom passes away. Uh, the number to dial is seven-two-zero-seven-one-six-seven-three-hundred. The code five-six-four-nine-four-three-pound. Press star six-one if you would like to participate. The email untiljustice@gmail.com. Uh, folks have thoughts, observations to share? Do not wait till the last moment, especially if you didn't get to share it all and you think you have a comment or question that you would like to share. Again, we're wrapping it up next week, so you can have all of your final thoughts, big takeaways from this text, uh, for next Thursday. Uh, retired firefighter, our caller two-two-six-two, uh, you all are with us. I'll check for other hands, if y'all have any other comments, questions, things to sit out in the additional reading, dear Senator.
Yes, uh, by the idea of a, a, uh, racist white person, quote-unquote, uh, having a black child would not surprise any white person at all. Uh, you know, it, 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 it is a common practice for white males such as Strom, Strom, Strom Thurmond to seduce young black females. Uh, and, uh, with, you know, with children and whatnot, he, he keeps a, uh, a, a distance, uh, from that child. Uh, and but at the same time, it's not, it's not, none of, none of this is, is, I would figure is unusual to a, another white person. Uh, so the idea of, uh, someone trying to destroy his political career by putting that in a newspaper, you know, uh, I don't think it would, would, would have been effective. Uh, and actually, it wasn't, so. Uh, that was just my thoughts when I was hearing that idea about, uh, ruining someone's political career because he having sex with, uh, non-white females. That's it.
Much obliged, retired firefighter. I've heard this a few times, uh, Thomas Jefferson and a few other folks where they've, oh, my gosh, speaking for the Negroes, can't believe this. Yeah, we've been doing that too, done that too. I don't know if that's grounds to fire him, fuss at him, or what have you. We love Old Strom. Uh, other folks who dialed in with a hand up, much obliged, our caller in Florida, retired firefighter in Florida. Uh, other folks who dialed in with a hand up?
How'd you hear?
Yes, sir, your volume's a little low. You could speak up, that would be great.
How about now? Is it okay now?
Uh, yes, sir, just make sure you, uh, speak loudly.
Ah, yes, how about now?
Better, better, yes, sir.
Oh, yes, thank you for taking my call again. Um, I was just looking through, uh, the beginning of chapter nine, and I noticed it's kind of ironic that, uh, the person, this woman who was a lawyer, uh, she was fighting for, seeking bar owners, seeking liquor license. She was helping and representing them, and she was just a drunk, probably getting free liquor and, uh, for representing them and ended up killing, uh, another person. Thought that was kind of ironic. Um, the, and before chap, before, in chapter eight, Essie Mae said, uh, "I went on Strom from his father's past. I couldn't because the ghost of Ben Tillman was always standing behind him with his pitchfork aimed at me." And she said, uh, this being like a Magna Carta, this letter, um, I, I don't know, it just, like you said, more confusing. If she, if she looks at this letter as a Magna Carta to Strom, and, you know, she, uh, this is from another racist, which is his father, you, you would understand, a person should understand that, you know, you're not including anything that they're producing, you know. Um, the, I guess Strom Thurmond's wife Nancy, again, more alcoholism, addicted to alcohol and diet pills. Um, and then tried to bribe the, the, uh, law enforcement officer to not take her in. You know, it was just white, white culture and, um, I guess she quoted by saying demon rum. I, you know, alcohol is just something to use. I mean, the people who, you know, act in a way when they drink alcohol, that's the demon, you know, the people, their actions. Again, she, uh, she, uh, brings up a lot of movies like Les Misérables and, and I guess Superman. It's, it's like, uh, suspension of disbelief, you know. Someone said earlier, uh, cognitive dissonance, you know, that, you know, she's suffering. She was definitely suffering. Um, and there's a part where she says, "He never asked me to cover anything up." I'm not sure if he's being completely truthful with that. I don't know, but I could be wrong. I guess that's it for now, but thanks for taking my call, guys.
Much obliged, good sir. Uh, that is interesting about, because she said that a few times, uh, even that, you know, having to say it over and over again, "He never asked me to cover anything up. He never asked me to cover anything up." Uh, you saying, hey, I have some suspicions about that. And that's one where he may not have ever come out and directly said, "Don't tell anybody that I'm your, uh, father," right? But if they're having meetings, like they did numerous times, she goes to Washington, I think, one of the first times, and she says, "Who do they think we are?" He didn't say, "Oh, I told them you're my daughter." That would have been on the up and up, and it's, "Oh, I just told them you're a friend of the family." I don't know too many children where they go see their parent, the post office, where they work, the saloon, where they get introduced as, "Oh, this is a friend of the family." That right there is communicating a lot, especially that, and then I drop five thousand dollars on you. Like I said, today's money, this would be like twelve thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars, who knows? But a lot. Thousand nineteen fifty is a ten, about ten thousand dollars today, even closer to twelve thousand, sorry. So, he may have never said, "Essie Mae, make sure you never tell me this," but you can't tell me he never said, "Don't tell anybody." And then regularly throughout the book, you're referring to these payments as hush money. Now, if he never called to that, why are you thinking of it as hush money? It would just be, oh, Dad hooked me up, and, you know, parents do that, right? They give them children money all the time. That's been going on, you know, since Methuselah. It would just be, oh, yeah, Dad hooked me up, he's rich, he has the money to do it, not hush money. Why would that, and she says that repeatedly. Julius even think, why would that even be in the, in the thought process? Hush, hush about what? What are you talking about? Cognitive dehab, worthy of great extraordinary pity. Uh, let's see, one of our folks, uh, investors, so continuing chapter eight, he wrote in. "In nineteen seventy-eight Charlie Pug Ravenel Lee Atwater served nearly a year in prison for financial misdoings. Uh, the iconic Arthur Ravenel Junior Bridge in Charleston, South Carolina is named for Pug's cousin, who also had a political career. Arthur is quoted as calling the NAACP 'The National Association of Retarded People.' There is an interesting documentary about Lee Atwater called Buggy Man, which details his role as a political advisor and architect of the Bush of the Southern Strategy for Ronald Reagan and George H.W. Bush. There is also an audio recording of him discussing the need to refine how racism is practiced in political campaigns, suggesting that saying nigger, nigger, nigger should be avoided, and racists should talk about busing instead." I think, uh, Jimmy Carter's, like, grandson or something had this recording and released it or what have you, but very, very famous. Number six, "The only time in his life that he broke the rules was with my mother. His one and only walk on the wild side. Stick a fork in me, I am done." I thought that was a pretty pitiful one, too, like, for many reasons. Uh, chapter nine, Senate Majority Leader Trent Lott of Mississippi. Uh, oh, we didn't get that far, we didn't get that far. Next week, coming for Trent Lott next week. Alrighty, notes that I took on this section. Man, I've taken so many notes in this book, just, I don't know if it's a book per se that I have enjoyed. I'd say this book is similar to Lucky that we read earlier this year. Both two books that I learned a lot about, not exactly ancient history, but history nonetheless, uh, that I would not exactly say that I enjoyed. Lucky is the worst book ever now, and this, I don't even know what to, to say. I've learned a lot. I certainly would not say that I've, uh, had a problem with reading it. It's been enjoyable to learn a lot, but wow, it is the saddest book ever, and, yeah, let's get to the notes. Let's see. And I have been reading the Kindle version. It is fascinating. Normally the case, the things that I highlight, because you can see that other people that have read the Kindle version of this book, you can see what they highlight. Nothing that they've highlighted is what I've highlighted, and what they've highlighted are things that I don't even think are that interesting in terms of the book. But let's see, going to things that I've highlighted, and they have way fewer highlights than me. Like, I've seen like two or three things where other people who read the book, they highlighted. I've highlighted more things that I can even talk about. Uh, let's see. So going back to, duh, 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 duh. So she got remarried in nineteen seventy. Uh, she says, talking about her second husband, "He had a wonderful, deep voice that I was susceptible to. He was sixty-two, I was forty-four. Maybe I shouldn't have been that hard on my father on age differences, I reflected." Pause right there, so I'm gonna say it again. So Carrie Butler was fifteen. Strom Thurmond was twenty-three when he got her pregnant. His second wife, Strom Thurmond was forty-five, might be a year either way. His second white wife was twenty-one. She caught his eye when she was fifteen. Next second wife, she is twenty-one when he is sixty-six. You don't have to be a calculus scholar, graduate mathematician. Her age being forty-four and marrying someone who's sixty-two is not the same at all as a white man who's in his forties or in his sixties in some sort of sexual arrangement with someone who is barely twenty, much less twenty-three and fifteen. It's not the same at all, and I mean, real, I would be looking at anybody, say, "You think this is just about an age difference? If this was an eighty-year-old and a sixty-year-old, nobody would care." Forty and sixty, nobody, hey, if Strom was forty and he wanted to go get a thirty-year-old, he was forty-five and he wanted to go get a thirty-year-old, nobody would care. Sixty-six and twenty-one? Continue, she says, "Our marriage, alas, only lasted one year. James would fall asleep in the living room watching television." That is one of the most dominant themes in this book, the black misandry for sure, but watching television? Again, at a time when it's not like he was there on Netflix, it's not like he was there with five hundred channels and DVR. I mean, you got three stations? Uh, James fall asleep in front of the television, then complained that the children making too much noise and waking him up. He soon moved back with his brother-in-law, which was where he had lived before we met. He moved back east and met another woman. Sound like blackmail privilege again. Like, I don't, we don't even hear enough about him to get his frustration, just come home and fall asleep in front of the television, like, wow, what a fulfilling life. Blackmail privilege. Uh, let's see. Man, if you just want to think about the existence, Strom Thurmond lives to almost a hundred-one. Carrie Butler dies at thirty-eight. Mary dies soon after, sounds like she probably didn't even make it to fifty. Julius dies at forty-six. You're not even talking about Willie Earle and Zachariah Walker, all these folks, unnatural causes, racism, get castrated and all. Strom Thurmond lives to a hundred. Essie Mae herself says, "We're all getting older. As I reached my fifties, I was beginning to feel it." Strom Thurmond is sixty-six and bragging, "I'm virile." Okay, feel that, feel that, look at that, I'm out here chasing down these college girls. Well, you know, I'm fit. She's approaching fifty now. Essie Mae should have been thinking like, man, my mom kidney failure and she dies at thirty-eight? Mary dies, sounds like she probably didn't make it to fifty, like, woo. I have got to be like ultra hell, I'm out here in California, like, it's kale every day. I'll kill you if you bring a chicken leg around me. We don't eat fried chicken ever. I'll kill you if you bring a hundred, country ham biscuit in this house. Like, man, I'm gonna be fruit, vegetable, water, like, I'm copying everything Strom Thurmond says on that one, because I'm just, I mean, just look at her family. And she says she's getting to fi- fifty, she's feeling it. "I unfortunately developed adult-onset diabetes, which runs in the Thurmond family." Eh, she didn't say Strom Thurmond had, uh, diabetes, did she? Did I miss that? I didn't read that right? I don't remember her saying Strom Thurmond had diabetes. He said, "He's virile, strong, I'm out running, lifting weights, got my barbells in the office." With all that diabetes, bad food, drinking soda, she mentioned the ginger ale, drinking a whole lot of soda and sugary snacks, and not getting any exercise and eating bad food, that'll put you on, on track for the diabetes. Would I get to say that C-word again? Asthma, diabetes, those are gonna put you as comorbidities for the Rona. Asthma, diabetes, those are gonna put you as comorbidities for the Rona, talked about that for two and a half years now, but diabetes doesn't run in the family, bad diet, no exercise, that can run in the family so that you will, generation after generation, be susceptible to the same thing, but that's one that you can easily correct. Put that chicken leg, as he keeps saying, drink some more water, put that soda down, stop drinking all that sugar and stuff. The food that we brag about, the hush puppies, everything that they bragged about eating, the, the negro diet. Crave fried chicken, I crave not having to take insulin, how about that, or any other white medications. I crave not feeling like I am about to fall apart at thirty-eight and forty, how about that? I wanna be virile, not so I can run around and rape children, maybe just so that I can take care of my children and live my little pleasant life and enjoy California, or to be on my assignment, replace white supremacy with justice, maybe you can do both. She continues, uh... Strom Thurmond, like, racist, they are the greatest name callers ever. He's sitting around, ah, he's a carpetbagger and a dinkie and all the rest of these negroes, that name call, that's race soldiers, let them do all the name calling. Universal man, universal woman, we don't do name calling, call people by their name, and that's that. Uh, let's see. Strom Thurmond gets his young white wife, gets his young white children, parade them out, vote for my daddy, stage all these photo ops, hair plugs and all of that, no Essie Mae, he can say, "Hey, get the black vote," and, "Hey, look at that, I got a negro daughter," eh, eh, okay. Let's see. She said, "No more." She's fast-forwarding through a lot of the seventies and eighties here, so Reagan is in office in the eighties, "No more with Strom Thurmond seen as the racist redneck, but as the dominant figure of the region that was coming to dominate the American political scene, the voice of the new South with the echoes of the old that provided soothing traditional reassur, assurance to a cautious nation." She says, "Even he got along with, uh, President, former President Bill Clinton, perhaps they bonded over their attraction to young women." That is white culture, all the way back to Thomas Jefferson, Jeffrey Epstein, Prince Andrew, Mary Kay Letourneau, make sure I get the white women in there. Uh, she says, uh, "Thurmond was one of the chief champions of Clarence Thomas's controversial nomination to the Supreme Court. It didn't matter that Thomas was a conservative Republican, he was a black man, and my father was right behind him one hundred percent. Ben Tillman must have been turning over in his grave. I can only say, this is someone who does not understand white supremacy racism. I can practice racism and rape a black child, I can hire a black person, support a black person for office, heck, not just the Supreme Court, even President, and still practice racism, white supremacy. We just don't understand what it means to be racist, what it means to be white." Uh, she says, "Thurmond made a special point to tell me when he visited Africa, as if it showed how enlightened he had become." Again, who's more informed about racism, Essie Mae, Strom Thurmond? Saddest book I've ever read, so she says, "When she completed her MA degree, University of Southern Cal, go Trojans, O.J. Simpson, oh my God." You knew, uh, O.J.'s alma mater, I can't believe it. "When she got her MA out in Southern Cal, for that milestone, he presented me with a string of genuine pearls and a diamond-encrusted giant pearl pendant. In the box was a note that said, 'Congratulations,' and nothing more. There was no signature, no love." Now, she has love in quotes, but I mean, really, that, I, so tragic, pitiful, just... And that's, I mean, she doesn't have anybody, she, it's not like she can go and celebrate with Carrie Butler and Mary, celebrate with her children, I guess she doesn't have Julius anymore, all she's got is Strom. And, you know, hey, hanging out with you, I got my young white woman and my young white family, send you a little change in the mail or whatever, but I mean, hey, can't even put my name on that, can't be associated with no nigger woman. Uh, let's see, "Twenty-four people highlighted the letter that Strom Thurmond's father gave to him that he passed along to Essie Mae. Twenty-four people highlighted that passage, I did not. Now, in that, I thought it was great, where he says, 'Be prompt on your job till the minute,' hey, somebody, uh, says that. Neutralizing workplace racism, can't be early, be on time. Read at every spare chance and think it over and try to remember what you have read." Wow. Reading is more important than watching television, absolutely, but then he also says, "Be strictly honest," now, I mean, really, really, why is that even on the page? Associate only with the best morally, only with the best people morally and intellectually? Ben Tillman gotta be crossed off, right? Strom Thurmond is out brawling with other white men on the floor of the Senate, he gotta be crossed out, too, right? Let's see. "The one time in his life that Thurmond broke the rules was with my mother, his one and only walk on the wild side. I found that passage so reprehensible. Having sex with a black person is a walk on the wild side, are you serious? The negroes are wild jungle? Like, come on, come on, and, hey, in my opinion, when you're saying that I'm forty-five and a fifteen-year-old caught my eye, I don't know what you mean by walk on the wild side, but I mean, that is much closer to it than, oh, I had sex with a black female, that was my walk on the wild side. Other than that, I was straight arrow, like, get out of here." I get that this is your dad, but I mean, really, she continues, she said, "His one and only walk on the wild side, I was exhibit A, proof that Strom Thurmond had a soul." I don't know what that means either. How are you his soul? How are you not proof that he raped a black child? Why isn't he proof of that? Saddest book I've ever read. "He never stepped forward to celebrate our relationship. You got some money, I guess sometimes you just have to be satisfied with money, and there's nothing to celebrate here, in my opinion. What am I supposed to celebrate about raping a fifteen-year-old black child?" I don't think there's a good answer to that one. Um, she says, "Many South Carolinians dubious of this May-December romance believe that Nancy had married my father, thinking that he would soon pass away, and that she would inherit," in quotes, "his Senate seat." Now, I mean, really, you can put that up with love and all the rest of it, 'cause she said before that this was about love. Hey, this white woman probably had her own objective, too, I'm gonna get some money, step out on him, he'll leave you in the will, hopefully he'll kick the bucket soon, maybe she didn't think he would live another forty years." Joke's on her. Uh, let's see. "I was miffed because she mentions at first that people wondered if Nancy Thurmond was drunk, and she says, 'Oh, no, get out of here, she didn't have, uh, anything in her system, and, ah, you all are just disparaging her name.'" Like, whoa, 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 that's not what's in the biography, and then we get to it later, like, oh, she had diet pill addiction, and she did have a problem, like, why would you say that? Tragic, like, you are making excuses for a white woman that you don't know, a white woman who would never even acknowledge your presence. And you're doing it for Strom Thurmond all throughout the book, she's not your family. If you just wanna say that on marriage, she's not your family. Family is more than just, oh, a name, or, or what, especially, these people are alive, it's not like I didn't know who these folks were, and we didn't know this until later on, no. We know about this, we just don't get down with negroes. Negroes are not family. Tragic, she says, and then we get again, "But the restraint Thurmond showed in his darkest hour, everything vile, in his niggeriest moment." She says, "The press, which had never been kind to my father." I know some of our listeners said the word "father" made them vomit, all of it, really, like, what are you talking about? He was on the cover of Time Magazine, what are you talking about? The press is unkind to O.J. Simpson. The press is unkind to black people. What do you mean unkind to Strom Thurmond? This man held office for all that time, how unkind could they have been? And I mean, really, it's in the autobiography, all of this touching and pinching and grabbing people's bottoms, there were no press and journalists who were running to talk about that, that went on for decades. So, how unkind were they, Miss Essie Mae Washington Williams? I get that it's your father, I get it. She may have been drunk at the time, I don't know. Um, talking about Nancy, who knows? Um... "Her father called Al Gore a pinko." My, dang, my goodness, my goodness. Uh... "Nancy was my family, too, and I couldn't help but regret being deprived of my right to mourn her," like, uh, saddest book I've ever read. You don't even know this white woman, you don't even know her, like, what, grieve her for what? Grieve for your father's loss? Father, put that in quotes. She says, "I had changed their worlds," there in italics, "and I was sure for the better. I would have loved sharing the wisdom of my years with my other secret family, but I was excluded." Saddest book I have ever read, and I don't know, what do you mean changed their world? Did you stop Strom, Strom Thurmond from raping children? Because he supported Clarence Thomas? Like, what exact, how did you change their world? I don't even understand, you didn't even meet Nancy, she doesn't even know you, presumably, so how did you change their world? Let's see. Marilyn Thompson, I emailed her about being a guest on the program, I didn't even wanna talk to her, right? I didn't even wanna read Strom Thurmond's biography, I was just like, eh, I'm in the library, it's here, do I get it, do I get it, eh, I don't wanna read it, I'm not that interested in Strom, so I get it on a larve, and then like, oh, wow, it does have some good tidbits, I'm glad I got it. Uh, and then I said, hmm, should I try to get the author on? I go back and forth, like, well, she is white, I like talking to white people, eh, eh, she writes me back, says, eh, send me some dates for May, so we might be talking to Marilyn, Marilyn Thompson, we'll see what she has to say about all this. She covered Strom Thurmond for year, all of it, oh my God. Marilyn Thompson, so glad I was on my job. Uh, the writer of the article, Marilyn Thompson collaborated, she didn't even leave that in there, Marilyn Thompson covered Strom Thurmond for like decades, not one day or five years, decades. Uh, collaborated with South Carolina political writer Jack Bass on a very unauthorized biography, Old Strom, I don't even know what that means, very unauthorized, which reiterated the accusations of the illegitimate black daughter and the cover-up. Jack Bass even showed up at my house in LA, I tried to be as polite as I could, telling him, as I had told Miss Thompson years before, she was on this case like the dogged Inspector Javert in Les Miserables, again, the influence of TV and theater, that we were family friends, which was technically true. Now, I mean, really, how long do we have to lie? And that's the same lie that Strom Thurmond got, like, I'm just, I'm breaking out his lies from years ago? Oh, my God, and for what purpose at this point? What does it matter at this point? Can we at least be truthful at this point? We gotta lie all the way to the grave. And then I gotta be upset about them writing this biography about, this is, man has been in public service for a half-century, most of his life, he's supposed to write books about him, he should be, stand by your record, homie, Dixiecrat, shut the schools down, forget Brown v. Board of Education, Supreme Court can't tell me nothing, stand by your record, what's the problem? Oh, that will do us, we'll come back next week and wrap it up. Wow, I'm so glad we really, and I even forgot to say, man, Marilyn Thompson may be coming on the program, uh, later this month, I told you, Zachariah Walker, it is, phew, this has been like signature cows' work, in the midst of everything, this particular book club, signature for the cows' uh, book club over our ten-year history, I said Zachariah Walker, I had been talking to the author when we started this book, the white man, he wrote all about, whole book about the lynching of Zachariah Walker, he should be on the program Monday, we should finish this book next Thursday before, and it full circle, we started with Zachariah Walker, we will end it with Zachariah Walker, and the white man who wrote this book on this specific lynching said he is working with Essie Mae Washington Williams' children, or at least her daughter specifically, in putting her memoir together about all this, who's expert on racism. He's here Monday for people who've been with us, Zachariah Walker, he was the first lynching that was mentioned in the book, nineteen eleven. We will go into, and man, that case is amazing, remember that's the one where he fired the gun joking around, he was drunk, sobriety would be best, and then they came and snatched him out of jail and burned him to death and all the rest of it, it is amazing, there were so many white children indicted in that case, like teenagers, not ignorant about racism. Pennsylvania, no less, not South Carolina, can't even hang this one on old South Carolina, and Ben Tillman, this is Pennsylvania, minutes from Philadelphia, not even an hour, brotherly love indeed. Wrapping this here up next week, wowzers, I can't say, and, well, I can, I do enjoy learning, I didn't even know about the Savannah River Plant, I enjoy learning about things like that, white supremacy racism, even today, View Park. I'll post the report, you can go and see the black people in the area, even think about that as we wrap up, 'cause she didn't go into all that detail, the place that Essie Mae bragged about living in the racial paradise of California, View Park, started deliberately, basically, that's a sundowntown, a subdivision, no negroes allowed, no non-white people, 'cause they didn't just say negroes, no non-white people allowed, they eventually allow a few Essies to come in, and she has a white parent, and they just let the negroes have it, and now, hey, never mind, we'll take it back, you negroes get out of here. That is the problem. Wrapping this all up next week, we'll be here tomorrow for Neutralizing Workplace Racism, which we got a little bit today, the Savannah River Plant, they poisoned all the negroes, but you also heard they didn't hire and promote the negroes either, and they even heard the black female, who said, "Man, I got all the qualifications, and I couldn't even get an interview." They hire all these white people who aren't even qualified. We talk about that every Friday, eight PM Eastern, five PM Pacific, Neutralizing Workplace Racism. Much obliged for all the folks who dialed in, hope it was worthy of your time and energy, man, for today. Sobriety would be best, we got Julius drinking and alcohol, drunk driving fatality, I mean, my God. And, and diabetes, oh, yeah, that's another one, sobriety would be best. Kidney, phew, how many ways you wanna hear it? Kidney failure, that was Mary, sobriety would be best. Matter of fact, leave it there, since everything keeps coming back to alcohol on this one, alcohol, 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 sobriety, and we just had all that about the cigarettes, that was included, diet pills, too, maybe put all that, they wanna dump all kinds of narcotics on us, we already gotta deal with environmental racism and asthma, and then they gotta make sure to dump cigarettes and liquor on you, and, oh, man, died at forty-six. Chadwick Boseman didn't even get that far, forty-three, lifestyle cancer, that's what he said, right? Liquor, exercise, fried chicken. Creator, we ask that you help us remain patient with other black people, victims of white supremacy, we ask that you help us remain patient with ourselves, remind us to demonstrate the highest levels of black self-respect at all times, in all places, each and every time we are in contact with another black person. It has been time, replace white supremacy with justice immediately. Cows signing out. Thanks all for tuning in.